Good evening and welcome to the resumption of the Tuesday, February 25th, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We have seven board members present, none absent. The board has been in closed session since six o'clock to discuss a student residency issue, employment of employee, and the approval of the January 28th, 2014, and the February 11th, 2014 closed session minutes. Next on our agenda, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the best part of any school board meeting, and that is student recognition. First, the Music Educators Association, ILMEA, all-state. Who do we have?
Yeah, let me introduce Bill Riddle. And Bill will be introducing our all-state musical students. This is a really high honor. These are the best students in the state of Illinois who've been selected as all-state honors. If you equate it to athletics, all-state football players, basketball players are a big deal. This is no different. So with that, Bill, if you want to do the introduction, that'd be great.
Could I have the all-state musicians join me up front? And we'll go for a semi-circle here, facing out this way. It truly is my honor and pleasure this evening to introduce to you ten outstanding York High School musicians who have been recognized by the state as being all-state musicians for the 2013-2014 school year. The organization that is responsible for bestowing this honor is named the Illinois Music Education Association, or ILMEA. This is no small feat for any student that earns this all-state distinction. Let's start off with a hand for these young musicians. Before we get back to our students, I'd like to introduce our music faculty from York High School, Becky Marionetti, Ray Oswald, Mike Pavlik, and Chris Gemco. And I'd also like to recognize our middle-school and elementary-school music educators, because as we all know, it took all of us, and particularly all of them, for this occurrence. So it's a team effort here in Elmhurst. And could I have our faculty who's present stand, please, who recognize our faculty members? The ILMEA is a professional organization with the mission to promote lifelong music learning and to provide leadership in music education. This process begins every October. Actually, it begins before October, when students start practicing the music that they will be auditioning on. But the official process of auditioning starts in October, when students from all over the state of Illinois individually audition on a set of predetermined music and technical exercises. Our state is divided into nine different districts, and York High School is a member of District One, which happens to be one of the largest and most competitive districts in the state. In District One alone, there are approximately 3,000 students from 75 different schools that audition for the honor of being selected into all-state band, jazz ensemble, orchestra, or choir. There's also students from across the state that submit original compositions and arrangements that are also reviewed and rated and adjudicated. This year, York High School was well-represented at the district level, with 37 of our students selected to participate in the bands, the orchestras, and the choir. After the All-District Festival, the students receiving the highest scores in each of the nine districts are selected to participate in the All-State Music Festival, and that took place January 22nd through the 25th in beautiful Peoria, Illinois. I always tell my wife, I've taken now 26 business trips to Peoria, Illinois. I don't know how many people can boast that, but it's really, actually, they do a wonderful job of hosting the festival. At that point, students participate in a three-days of rehearsals, working with guest conductors from often collegiate directors, some local and some from all parts of the country. They have a fantastic experience in the rehearsal process, which is really probably the most influential of the three days, is with their fellow musicians from different schools, working with these professionals in this situation. This culminates with a concert on Saturday, with all the groups performing one after the other. These students right here, we have ten that were actually honored this year, and I'd like to introduce them, and then we'll honor them with their certificates. Julia Dirksheidie, harpist; Lauren Gainer, flutist; Jessica Hines, alto, voice, vocal; Ally Meyer, flutist; Maddie Meyer, soprano vocalist; Kristin Moos, alto vocalist; Aaron O'Neil, alto vocalist; Zach Triska, tenor vocalist; Christina Uribe, oboe; and Hannah Widmeyer, soprano vocalist. Could we give these young musicians another round of applause?
So I apologize in advance if I'm less than perfect on a couple of pronunciations, but let me read this proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Music Educators Association, ILMEA, competitions are considered the most prestigious statewide student recognition program in music education. And whereas high-school musicians undergo stringent auditions, competing against students from one of nine individual ILMEA districts, followed by the qualifying students earning a place in that district's honor ensemble, from which the all-state musicians are chosen. And whereas this program recognizes some of the very best musicians in the state and rewards excellence on the part of individual students while encouraging further music study and artistry. And whereas York Community High School students, Julia Dirksheidie, harp; Lauren Gainer, flute; Jessica Hines, alto voice; Allison Meyer, flute; Madeline Meyer, soprano voice; Kirsten Moos, thank you, alto voice; Aaron O'Neil, alto voice; Zach Triska, tenor voice; Christina Uribe, thank you, oboe; and Hannah Widmeyer, soprano voice, were awarded all-state recognition in their particular music specialty and performed in the All-State Band, Chorus, and Orchestra Festival on January 22nd through 25th, 2014, and at the Illinois Music Educators All-State Convention Festival in Peoria, Illinois. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and members of the York Performing and Visual Arts Division. Bill Riddle, chairman; Christopher Gemco; Rebecca Marionetti; Ray Oswald; Mike Pavlik; Michelle Sherlock; and Anna
Shapoznikov.
Shapoznikov, thank you again, little coaching appreciated, for this outstanding accomplishment. Can we have a round of applause for our students and faculty?
Our next presentation is in relation to the Stock Market Game, and it's my pleasure to introduce Jim Burrell, who will do the honors. While Jim's walking up, though, just to let people know, the Stock Market Game is an online educational program sponsored by Econ Illinois, which is used in thousands of classrooms nationwide to teach math, social studies, business, economics, and language skills, while focusing on the importance of long-term saving and investment. And many schools participate, and said teams, since 1988, over a half a million students have participated, and we have some students that just did an outstanding job in placing significantly in the stock market game. So with that, Jim?
Okay, thanks, Dave. Yeah, we're very proud of our kids.
Oh, we got it. Thank you. Yeah, we're very proud of our kids, really, in all our elective classes, but these ones stood out. The way the Stock Market Game is played is at the beginning of September, each group, we sign the kids up for groups, and each group got $100,000 in cash, fake money, of course, and then, although, to be honest, with these kids, we may want to consider real money at some point in the future. And then you could margin another $100,000, so you actually had $200,000 that you could, you know, you had to pay interest on the margin money, but these kids really picked some nice stocks. So we do some research as to which stocks to purchase, and then it's really up to them. You know, they have $200,000 to spend for their individual groups. This past fall, there were 849 teams representing schools from all over the state of Illinois. And York High School kids, believe it or not, we finished first, second, and third out of 849 teams, which is that's really a testament to these kids. And the nice thing for us is we play this game across many different classes. So our third-place team came from an Intro to Business class that I teach. Our second-place team came from an Entrepreneurship class that Mr. Brian Sheridan teaches. And then Ms. Weldon had the Economics Club also participate, and they won. So what I want to do a little bit is talk about the kids that were on each individual team, and I'm going to throw some stocks out there, and these are their picks, by the way, so some of them are still good. Chipotle went from 418 to 512, so in that three-month time period, it was up about $94 a share. We had Bank of America went from 117 to 133. Pretty sure that was, was that Bank of America, Jack? Okay, Kyle, was that Bank of America that you guys had? Yeah, that's what I thought. And then Amazon was up $34 a share, and Netflix was a real big winner for the kids, so that was up $62 a share over just a three-month period. So they made, the third-place team, which is the stats that I have, they were 28,000 on top of the 100,000 in cash that they got. So if you times that by four, they're basically, assuming that they're your financial managers, they're doubling your money over the course of a year, which would definitely beat most Wall Street analysts. So a lot to be proud of here. A third-place team was from Intro to Business, and it's George. George, I'm going to raise your hand here, so it's George Stoy Selakovich. Is that in the neighborhood, George? I'm sorry, if that's, Nick Tucker was on that team. Congratulations, Nick. Kyle Price was on that team, and Phil Serpico. So these kids, they finished in third place in the Intro to Business. And then I'll talk briefly about, the Entrepreneurship team was Jack Pulte, whose Jack is here tonight. Itorio Alcapan is not here tonight, but Dominic Ravenna and the three of them, they came in second and did a great job. So I'll turn the mic over to Ms. Weldon, and this is the first-place team from the Econ Club.
Hello, everyone. I would just ditto everything that Jim just shared with us. I mean, they were amazing group, and they really did all of this on their own. I have little to no responsibility of their success at all. The opportunity just came with being a part of Econ Club, which they participated in on Friday mornings, but to really be successful in this, they had to go and really buy into this much more than just on Friday mornings and do their own research and really get involved with it. So it's my pleasure to be a part of their success here, and just the excitement that that brings for their future, and like I said, thinking about maybe they'll take care of their teacher someday and say, hey, I'll invest your money, right, and look back at us here. So the winning team was Jack Pulte, again, Jimmy Bukala, Pat Falkenberg, and two that aren't with us tonight weren't able to make it, Matt Niviera and Matt Druffel. So all seniors here at York, and on to amazing things next year. So thank you very much.
Now, I do have a comment or two. Given that the financial markets is my day job, when I'm not on the school board at night, the academic research shows that 80% of all actively managed money underperforms the index. But Mr. Burrell, you show up here year after year after year.
Well, they show up. And by the way, we were second and third last year. We didn't catch that first spot, so we changed after this year, which is nice.
With, I mean, you show up with your top-three-ranked teams, I mean, year after year after year. There were 16 hedge funds last year that outperformed the total stock market, only 16 out of the thousands of hedge funds that exist in this country. But you show up year after year after year. I mean, I'm not saying anything, but I'm guessing that the SEC will be launching an investigation.
It's just fake money.
It's kind of like Ken Doughty's academic awards for his volleyball team. He shows up year after year after year. So with that, let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Illinois Stock Market Game teaches and reinforces critical thinking, decision-making, independent research, cooperation, and communication, as well as saving and investing. And whereas the game is a statewide competition run by Econ Illinois, which allows students to use real internet research and news updates, making the simulation an even better mirror for the real marketplace. And whereas teams started with a virtual cash account of $100,000 and strove to create the best-performing portfolio using a live-trading simulation while researching and evaluating stocks to make decisions based upon what they had learned over a three-month period. And whereas York High School students from three separate classes finished first, second, and third out of 824 stock-market teams from the Chicagoland area, earning over $100,000 combined on their initial investment. And whereas Matthew Druffel, Patrick Falkenberg, Matthew Niviera, Jack Pulte, James Polka ... Pokalada? Pokala, thank you. And from the Economics Team placed first in the competition, where Itorio Alcapan, Jack Pulte, Dominic Ravenna, from the Entrepreneurship Class placed second, and Kyle Prouse, is that correct? Philip Serpico, George, George, help me. George up here? Thank you. And Nicholas Tucker, from the Introduction to Business Class placed third. And whereas these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and Jim Burrell, Business Department Chairman, Brian Sheridan, Entrepreneur Class Teacher, and Jessica Welton, Economics Club Sponsor, for this outstanding accomplishment. Have a round of applause for all those students and faculty. We're going to take a minute break, because there's homework to be done, stocks to be
If I may, I have one more honor that I would like to mention tonight, and if I could have Margaret, Ms. Schnorr, please stand up. I like to make her nervous. This is Dr. Schnorr. As of about two or three weeks ago, she is an earned doctorate. That is quite an accomplishment, and you only realize it if you've gone through it, but it is an amazing feat, and want to congratulate her on just a great
Given the amount of time and effort, while Dr. Schnorr has been doing her job so well in this district, and going to school at night and earning her doctorate degree, we are very proud of you. Next on our agenda is public comments. I don't have any blue comment cards, but is there anybody in the audience that is here to make a public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to superintendent's communication.
Yes, our first communication is FOIA requests, and let me go through these. We had four from our past meeting. One regarding information taken from an ISB report, which was granted. We had a FOIA request regarding disciplinary information, which was denied. We had a FOIA request regarding specific financial information, which was also denied, and a FOIA request on a specific request for a proposal that we had put out, and that was granted. Those are the four Freedom of Information requests that we had since our last meeting. Our next item is a report to the Board of Education on our mobile learning initiative. We had promised the Board that we would put together a report, and we are going to present that report tonight, and we're going to start that with Dr. Johns, who will walk us through that report. We have some staff and guests who will also speak to the Board tonight on this initiative for the school district.
Good evening. As Dave said, this is probably our second part of a series of conversations regarding the use of technology, specifically mobile technology, in the district. As you're aware, we have a Curricular Technology Committee that is sponsored by Kathy Baker, David Smith, and myself. It's probably one of the most dynamic special committees we have in the district. It's always an exciting meeting. We were lucky at our most recent meeting to have Karen Stufan and Emily Bastido represent the Board of Education at the meeting and made great contributions, and I think had a chance to experience some of the excitement that is evident at that particular committee. This is an update. We are continuing to make progress, and we would like to keep the Board abreast of developments, and additionally, answer questions that came up at the last meeting. So we have some guests that will speak after my short remarks. Terry Brezner, who's currently at District 67, which is a K-8 district in Park Ridge, 64?
64.
64. That is a K-8 district that feeds into Park Ridge. They have an extensive mobile learning initiative, and their students matriculate into the Maine Township High School District, another district with a really strong mobile learning initiative program, and she's also a resident of Elmhurst Schools, and she was explaining to us her high expectations. So we're very excited to have her here. She's renowned in the area for really this area of expertise. And we have two middle-school teachers who've been part of the technology rollout or the technology pilot plan that we've had at the middle level. We have Charlotte Kula, and we have Frank Daumen here to share some of their experiences, and I hope be able to elucidate a little further on some of the great things that are happening with our current mobile learning initiative program. Just to give you an update on where we've grown since last time, both the middle-school and the high-school pilots are in the second of their three-quarter initiative. You'll recall last year, the high-school had a number of pilot programs in place. This is the first year for a major series of pilots at the middle level. We continue to have discussions with the District 205 staff and administration to refine our vision. As technology becomes more ubiquitous, on an almost daily basis, we're constantly revitalizing our plan. As I talked last time, we were starting to get some interest in K-5 for additional technology, particularly in the form of Chromebooks at the elementary level. To say that has increased would be a gross understatement. There is real excitement about the potential of children in grades four and five to have keyboard-based technology, not tablets, but probably Chromebooks, in the classroom, so our students can start writing and being more productive, particularly in writing. So this is something we're pursuing very quickly. Additionally, we've had site visits at really three districts that are leaders in the Upper Midwest. That's Lydon District 212, to our east, Maine Township that's northeast from us, and also the Glenbrook High School District 225, all of which have very strong programs, I would say exemplary programs, that we hope to aspire to. We've included feedback from the middle-school pilots for presentation today. We have feedback both from teachers and from students. The teachers were asked, the degree that Google Apps and Chromebooks helped their students' learning, and you'll see that it's 100% to the positive. Now, there's only an N of eight teachers that participated in that, because it was a pilot, but you can see that the teachers are pretty strong in their feelings. We asked a similar question to students, and we see, using my quick math, 97% of the students had positive feelings, neutral or positive feelings, about the use of Google Apps and Chromebooks. You will see that there are eight responses on the negative. I actually look at that as a good thing, is that somebody got pushed a little bit, or we have some authentic responses. It wasn't just a buzz about being able to use technology, but people actually put some thought into it and gave us some areas that we might need to improve. Additional question was, how did the Google Apps for Education, that's what the GAF acronym means, and I did not come up with that one, how did GAF and Chromebooks affect the quality of your students' work during the pilot? And we see both some positive and significant positive effect coming from our classroom teachers. The students were a little less enthusiastic, but still very positive, with either responses of some positive or significantly positive, being at 79%. And mind you, that's a pilot with precious little professional development, well, a good amount of professional development, but not as much as we'd like. Continuing on, what is your attitude about the concept? And we see a strong support from the classroom teachers and pretty strong support from the students. students, probably the same group of students there at the bottom thinking it's not a good idea. But that is some more homework we need to do. Just a few comments coming from the students. Even the students told us they think it was easier for the teachers to give them feedback. Feedback is really essential in the learning process to make sure it's timely and effective to get back to students right away so they're still in the mix of the thinking about the activity that they just completed. Students enjoy being able to turn in homework from home and students were able to do homework from just about anywhere. In some report having it fun, some just gave it the summative, "It was amazing." Teachers thought that they were getting more elaborate content from their students. We saw increased capacity for communication. Teachers thought it was, is more, they were able to be more student-centered and student-driven and reported being energized. So some real positive feedback we have from our teachers. Currently, grades six through 12, we're continuing to emphasize the use of Google Apps for Education. In 912, looking forward into next year, we're hoping to double our outlay of Chromebooks to, to maybe having 10 to 12 more classroom carts that will be shared by courses throughout the day. This is in the exploration phase. At the middle school, we hope to triple the number of Chromebooks, again at a classroom cart basis. We're not at the level yet where we think that students will be a true one-to-one in which they would take their devices home. As I mentioned earlier, at K-5, we're looking to consider piloting Google Apps for Education at grade five. The teachers were very confident the fifth graders are not only appropriate for the, for this technology. Quite honestly, they're, they're, they were talking about kids, their students emailing them as young as third grade, that the technology that's available in this community in the homes is, is broad-based and the kids are perfectly adept at handling the technology such as a Chromebook. We also, and you've seen this in some other documentation that we've provided, we do recommend Curricular Technology Coaches for FY15. That is about speed, thoroughness, and satisfaction of the experience both for classroom teachers and for students, to be able to provide just-in-time or right-down-the-hall type professional support to truly integrate the technology into the classroom, we think is very beneficial. We've made great gains. We're positive, we're, we're very positive about those gains and grateful for the, the work that's been done. We see more capacity if we had more technology support, more coaching support in the future. So that's a recommendation we have in the future. At this point, I'd like to introduce Terry Brezner. As I, as I indicated before, but before, as Terry comes up, are there any questions on what I've provided? I'll give you another opportunity at the end to ask more questions. Then I'd like to introduce Terry Brezner. As I mentioned before, really an expert in this field in terms of implementing technology programs and she's currently at District 64, Park Ridge Niles, and I think will give you, answer some of the questions you asked at the last meeting of what is it like for a high-performing district to implement technology on a broad scale? And so we asked Terry to help us out and hopefully provide you with the answers that you're seeking. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Johns, for that very flattering introduction and thank you to the Board of Education and to Superintendent Prunell for inviting me here tonight. I have been a close follower of Elmhurst 205 for many years, probably beginning back when I was a Director of Technology next door in Addison. I had the opportunity to collaborate many times when David Smith joined the team and then even more so when Kathy Baker joined the team. And she and I share a very similar passion for not only technology, but really technology in education. And so even prior to moving to Elmhurst, I did many times speak to Kathy about coming to District 205 to speak on behalf of this initiative related to technology coaching. It's something that I'm very passionate about and now having moved to Elmhurst, I am even more passionate about it as I stand in front of, in front of all of you. So just to give a little bit of background about myself, I've been in education for eighteen years, nine of which I've spent as a Director of Technology. Five of those years were, as I said, next door in Addison where we did some great things and then moved on to Park Ridge Niles District 64 where we really continued our work of moving forward in technology and building the capacity in our teachers. And for the past three years of my time in Park Ridge, I have actually worked with implementing a coaching model to really develop teachers in the area of instructional technology. On a personal note, as was mentioned, I, my family and I recently moved to Elmhurst this past summer. We closed on our house on August 15th and our, two of our oldest kids started on August 19th here in District 205 at Hawthorne School. So I have my oldest daughter who's in fourth grade and I have a son who's in first grade and then two more who will be joining 205 in the coming years. So I have a personal vested interest in the future of technology here in this district and, and I will say that the number one reason why my husband and I chose to move to Elmhurst out of all of the suburbs that we were looking at was because of the quality of the schools. And my husband, who unfortunately we could not get a sitter tonight, but he would have liked to be here, he's an educator as well. He currently stays at home taking care of our four children and serves as a classroom, the room parent for our son's first grade class and is actively involved over at Hawthorne. So I'm, we're very excited to be a part of this community and really excited about the things that are, that we're here to talk about tonight. So the focus of tonight's meeting is really to talk about professional development specifically in the area of technology. And as I said, while my passion is technology, my focus and my background is really in teaching and learning. So as we all know, in the area of professional development with working with teachers, we have pretty traditional methodologies. Our teacher calendar does not allow for a lot of time of professional development. Our teachers come and their main focus is to work with students. So we offer workshops that are after school. We offer some release time. Some teachers have opportunities to attend conferences. A lot of our teachers are independent learners who either attend graduate school or choose to take some online courses or work in other independent study programs on their, by their own choice. And what we found in the research over many, many years is that while there is some impact of these traditional methodologies, the lasting impact at the actual classroom level is very little. So the research shows what are the characteristics of high-quality professional development? And what we found is that it needs to be job embedded. It should be focused on the classroom. When our teachers leave their classroom to go learn about new initiatives, new curriculum, new technologies outside of the context of their classroom, then they come back to the realities of teaching and learning and it's a different ballgame. We also know that professional development should be sustained over time. Just having the opportunity once to go to a workshop and learn about something is not enough to really come back and embed that and have that transform the way you teach. And individualized, the word that we use with students is differentiated. It's the same thing with teachers. We need to be able to meet teachers at their individual levels. Teachers range from new develop, you know, newly developing in the area of technology integration, all the way up to what we would consider to be experts at integrating technology. And we need to make sure that the professional development that they received is personalized to fit their needs. We also need to have follow-up. And that really means that if I go to a workshop and I have someone who presents something to me, and again, I go back to my classroom and two weeks later I pull out that handout that I got and now I'm trying to implement it, who do I go to for help? That person that we brought into our district for that day is no longer there. And how are they really getting that follow-up and that feedback, which is the final component? And what we found in teaching students is that one of the most powerful things that we can do, instructional strategies that we can use with kids is to provide them feedback, feedback about their own learning, ability for them to give feedback about their own learning. And we need to do the, give the same opportunities to teachers as they're being asked to learn new things. So this all, this was probably the key slide that I presented in District 64 that really caught people's attention. This was based on research by Joyce and Showers back from 2002. So this is not a new thing, the idea of coaching. It's actually been around for many years. And as we look across the columns going from left to right, we see that we have the knowledge level. I know facts and information. The skill level, I'm actually able to perform what I learned. And then that transfer level. And the transfer level is where you actually are, it's deeply rooted within your daily practice. And that's the level that we're trying to achieve with students, with adult learners, the same thing. So as we look down the rows, when we simply study a theory, you can see our return rates. We're getting 10% people knowing the information, 5% who are able to do it, zero at the actual application level. Demonstration, we see some improvement, 30%, 20%, still at zero. When we get to practice, so I go to a workshop and I'm actually able to do some hands-on and that was a, a big push in, in technology is actually, you know, bring your device with you and learn hands-on. So we get a 60% knowledge gain, 60% skill gain, still only a 5% transference at the classroom level. Where we see our biggest returns is when we have peer coaching. There's different names for it, but peer coaching, instructional coaching, working with a colleague to develop a new skill is what it's about. And as you can see, 95% across the board. And that's the power that we have seen coaching work wonders with our teachers in District 64. So I'll just speak about our experience in, in District 64 and, but it's really something that can be applied to almost any educational organization. When I first started in District 64, we had a five-year strategic plan and it was a long-range plan that had involved community members, it had involved parents and staff, administration, and they had really worked to identify what were the key initiatives that were going to be a focus for the next five years. And technology came out as the first one. And one of the things that the, the original Strategic Plan Committee started looking at was the whole concept of coaching. Because what they wanted to make sure we didn't do was not to just throw a bunch of devices at teachers and at students and have them not be used effectively. And that is where I think we've seen a lot of one-to-one initiatives in education fail because you have a lot of money to buy stuff and not a lot of money to support additional FTEs over the course of years. So what we worked through the strategic plan, we had a committee, the Technology Implementation Committee, which consisted of staff, both classroom level, technology staff, we had administrators all get together and really tried to develop what would coaching look like in District 64? And some key things that came out of that for our pilot was we have eight buildings in our district and we're K-8, so we have two middle schools, we have five elementary schools, and we have an early childhood center. And what we wanted to do originally, I thought, hey, we can get four technology coaches, we can split them half-time across eight buildings, we can get a lot of good information, everyone will be able to progress to a certain level. And the, the committee actually came back and said, "We really want to pilot what we want this to look like in the future," which would be a dedicated coach at each building. And they gave a strong rationale for why they wanted that to be. And it really made sense that we wanted a coach who would develop a rapport with a given staff, that they would build trust with staff because that's the key to coaching is having that trust built within the group that you're working with. So we decided to actually pilot in three of our buildings. We chose one middle school, one of our large elementaries, and one of our smaller elementaries. And we thought that that would give us really good data moving forward to see if it would be effective in all of our buildings. So we spent that entire year implementing, we did a lot of time evaluating. Our board is very conscientious of how we implement our dollars and they wanted to make sure that we had data to back up our choices moving forward. So we did surveys, we did a lot of observations, and I actually went to every, each of our pilot schools and did a series of focus groups with staff to really glean information from how is this impacting the way you teach in your classroom? And so what we saw through those data collection tools is that we had a, a constant, a constant theme that emerged across all of our, all of our groups. And what we found is that teachers experienced an increased confidence in their ability to utilize technology within the classroom. They were actually increasing their own capacity, their skills that they developed. We also found that it, the impact that the coaches had was really contingent on the quality of the coach themselves. So having a really proficient person in that role, and I, I can speak to this a little bit later as well, but our coaches, the criteria that we use to choose them, they had to have classroom teaching experience. That was the primary focus was that they were good teachers with, with tech skills. And that was the focus that we really looked on. And then providing that, we found that it was truly an effective professional development model. It wasn't a sit-and-get, it wasn't a one-time thing, it was a dedicated person who was in their building every day, who was able to work with them. They co-taught, they modeled lessons, they sat down and they did lesson plans with them, they provided that feedback, and it was really a year-long approach to moving each teacher along that continuum. And we found that it had a positive impact on student learning. We found that teachers were, were reporting all of the things that we know about when you effectively implement technology in a classroom. You see higher student engagement, you see students who are taking greater ownership of their learning, you see students who are more invested in the results that they're getting. So overall, it was a really positive experience for us. And based on that success, we were actually able to present all of that information over a series of board meetings and able to recommend that we move forward with full-time coaches at each of our seven buildings, not our early childhood center, but each of our seven K through eight buildings. And it, it wasn't easy. It wasn't something that the board took lightly. It was something that the board thought, you know, pretty long and hard about and really looked at the data and asked a lot of questions and, and really wanted to make sure that this is where we were invested as a district. Are teachers on board with this? Are, is the administration on board with this? And is this really where you want to invest your money? So basically, the board approved those positions for three years. So we are currently in our second year of that and next year, if we came back and said that this was no longer successful, the program would sunset and we would lose those seven positions. But because of this, the success that we have experienced, looking forward to the, to the future, our district is invested in professional development provided through coaching. And, and that was the key takeaway from it. And so some of the impacts that we saw across the board was our, just a general increase in the use of technology. Smartboards were on more, carts were being checked out more, students were doing more activities that involved, involved technology. Teachers were really collaborating with one another. During that time, we also saw a greater increase in our teachers and their web presence, using the web as a communication tool for their parents and their students. During that time, similar to what you have done here in District 205, we fully implemented Google Apps for Education. However, we've implemented it, we have some kids as young as second grade who are using Google Apps for Education. And we went class by class, but this year we have all grades two through eight utilizing Google Apps for Education. And if we think about the four Cs of 21st century learning, communication, collaboration, critical thinking, and creativity, we see all of those things are facilitated through the use of Google Apps for Education. And on a personal note, my daughter, who actually did her, her report for her fourth-grade class, we emailed the teacher and asked if it would be okay for her to do a Google presentation. Teacher was, said, "Of course, absolutely." And so my daughter actually got to present her Google presentation to her class, which was, which was pretty exciting and she's in fourth grade. And then we, what we really saw too was that instead of pushing technology on teachers and always encouraging teachers to use the technology, the teachers are now the ones who are driving it. We want more, we need more, we need better access, we need it when we need to teach. We can't just have it when map testing isn't going on. We can't just have it when the new park assessment is over. We need it when our students need to learn, which is every day. And so that has been an exciting thing to really watch. And as I said, our board is very diligent in, in keeping me on my toes and asked for a lot of metrics related to how our teacher is actually developing. So we actually administered what's called the Lodi Survey. It's a Levels of Technology Innovation Survey that's kind of a, a criterion-referenced national survey that you can put out to see what are, how are teachers developing in the areas of the net standards and 21st century skills. So we're gonna, we're gonna use that as a benchmarking tool for our staff to see how they progress along that continuum. And in that time, we've also been able to implement a one-to-one Chromebook pilot for grades three through eight. And last night, I was actually at my board meeting and presented some preliminary financial options for one-to-one using Chromebooks in grades- in grades three through eight, and we have had tremendous success. And one of the things that I will say, because our board is looking at, well, can we really do all grade levels all at once, or should we phase this in over time? And I think you would have a really hard time telling third-grade teachers why their students deserve it less than the sixth, seventh, or eighth-grade teachers, which tends to be what happens in technology, where we work from the top down. And the things that our third graders are doing are just as amazing as the things that our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders are doing. So it will be an interesting next couple of months as our board makes that decision moving forward. We also determined for our K-through-two population that we wanted to provide them with technology as well, and our committee worked to recommend the iPad as the divisive choice for our K-through-two population, and keeping it at a one-to-four ratio for this year, and increasing that based on grade level over the coming years. And it's really going to be based on what their needs are. We are at half-day kindergarten, so it doesn't make a whole lot of sense in two and a half hours to say we need one-to-one. But what is the need when they're working in small groups, and how do we support early literacy for those grade levels? And then our key focus has, and always will be, high-impact instruction. How do we leverage technology to enable differentiation to occur, to meet all kids' needs? How do we keep kids engaged? How do we allow for those four Cs of 21st century learning? And that's what we've seen through building the capacity of our teachers, is that now they are capable of doing all of these things within their classroom. Now they just need the tools in order to do them. So moving forward, as I said, our district really supports sustaining this model over time, and it's going to come to some hard decisions, what will go in its place in order to continue this model moving forward. And as I said, we have a one-to-one learning initiative on the table for grades three through eight, continuing to support our primary learners in pre-K-through-two with the appropriate devices. And also really expanding the role of our coaches, it's not just technology that they support, it's instruction. We had a new math adoption this year. They were equal partners in providing the professional development for that. The Common Core, they are very well-versed in Common Core, and they teach more instructional strategies on how to implement the Common Core while leveraging technology. And as I said, supporting our new state assessments that will be coming. So those are the future steps that hold, that, you know, we are eagerly awaiting to see what happens in the future for District 64, but it is by far, in all of my years of education, and providing professional development, sitting and getting professional development. Instructional coaching has been one of the most powerful things that I've seen to actually transform the way teachers teach. And I'm so excited about all the great things that you have going on already. I'm excited that you have two teachers here who are hopefully going to share with you the exciting things that they're really taking the ball and running with. And if you have any questions, I am more than happy to answer them. I was limited to fifteen minutes, I don't know how I did, but I could talk about this for weeks and weeks, I'm sure.
So Dr. Brezner, I have a couple of things to say to you. First of all, thank you very much for sharing your expertise with us. This was extremely helpful. I'll open it up to questions in a second. Second of all, I want to say, welcome to Elmhurst.
Thank you.
Frankly, I couldn't think, my new pastime is when I find somebody that's moved to Elmhurst, ask them why they've moved here, and you've already answered that question. But frankly, I couldn't think of a better, a bigger compliment to pay to our faculty, to our administration, and to our entire staff, that when two professional educators research the Chicago suburbs and decide on Elmhurst because of the schools, I think that's a huge compliment to the people that work here. So, thank you. And now let me open it up for questions. Emily?
The instructional coaches, were those teachers that you hired that had experience or interest in technology, or did you hire people from outside the district? Where did you get the coaches?
We started in our pilot phase, we hired three. Two actually came from within. There were two of our classroom teachers who transitioned into that role. And then one was an educator who had eleven years' teaching experience, along with a technology education experience, and we hired that third person from outside the district. Then when we expanded, we actually hired one more from internally, and then the remainder were from outside.
Margaret?
Again, thank you for this presentation. This was fabulous. A couple of questions. My first question, I'm wondering if there was any type of criteria or benchmark on the number of teachers that a coach could manage? So if you could help us understand how you manage that, and is there some limit? So, you know, I'm thinking of, we have a high school district, which is a number of teachers. Is that still a realistic recommendation? And what are your thoughts on that?
One of the great things that came out of doing the pilot the way we did, having it at a middle school, where our staff is almost double of that of any of our elementary schools, one of our larger elementary schools that has close to 700 kids, and then one of our smaller elementaries that has roughly, you know, 300, 350 kids, we actually found that the impact was the same. And, which really surprised us, because we, you know, we thought, okay, they're only going to be limited in that time. And what we found is that being a part of a particular staff, they transitioned and developed into that role to fit the needs of their staff. So at the middle school, and it's similar to a high school, you have team planning times, and you have different schedules that allow for a little more collaborative work to happen, as opposed to maybe more of the one-on-one that some of our coaches in our smaller schools are able to do. So I think that there definitely is a limit, because I see that our coaches, the more initiatives they take on, as people see how well-versed they are in a lot of these areas and what they can do for them, I do see that they can start to get spread pretty thin. And I do think that that's a consideration for looking at your staff numbers. I think it's more important to look at your number of staff versus your number of students, because that's really who you're supporting. And looking at what is the capacity of that, of an individual, to provide some one-on-one, small group, and whole group. And those are the three different kind of areas that we had our coaches work in. We targeted one-to-one with a lot of teachers. However, you're not going to get every teacher to work one-on-one with a coach. Please don't think that we are now every teacher's, you know, 100% spending 45 minutes a day with a coach, because that realistically doesn't happen. You have some teachers who want to do a 10-minute check-in, get a quick idea, and move forward, and they do great with that. You have some teachers who have weekly standing 45-minute appointments during their planning time. So it varies. And I think as the role develops, as the capacity develops, you need to monitor that and carefully, you know, I work very closely with our principals to make sure that the needs are being met.
And one question, I want to be sure I understood this right. You, for the instructional coaches that you had, did I hear that they were also helping with other initiatives besides technology? Did I misinterpret when you said Common Core?
No. And really, the whole philosophy and approach that we've taken is that we never teach technology in isolation. If a teacher comes to one of our coaches and says, "My goal is to learn how to use Edmodo," the coach will come back to that teacher and say, "Why? What are you teaching your kids? What's the objective? What's the learning target? That's Common Core. You know, what's your standard? What are you trying to achieve?" And then maybe Edmodo's the tool that we'll work with, and we can develop some ideas, or maybe it's not. Maybe there's something better to help you achieve that learning standard with your students. And that's what we, so as we've developed teachers in our new math adoption, as we've developed teachers in the Common Core, our tech coaches have really become a train-the-trainer in those areas, that we try to take, here's our district-wide learning initiatives, and how do we leverage technology with teachers to see those results in the classroom? So again, I think that just our primary focus is to never learn a piece of technology in isolation. It's always through a learning initiative. And then you're really getting, you know, killing two birds with one stone.
And if I could ask one more?
Of course.
I'm wondering, I remember one slide you said ninety-five percent. Have you seen that type of compliance with your pilot or your current initiative, or where I'm at, or do you think you are?
I will say, when teachers really focus in on a specific learning target of their own, if they really want to say, "I want to, I want to develop more collaboration in my class. How can I do that with technology?" And the tech coach might work with you through the course of the year to really develop how you're using Google Apps for Education with your kids, for example. And that, they might sit and co-plan together. The coach will probably come in the first time and model how she walks your kids through logging in to the application, and maybe do some sample lessons. Then she's going to do that gradual release of responsibility, like teachers do with their students. "Now I want to see you do this. I'm going to be in the classroom, and I'm going to answer questions, and I'm going to be there to support, but we're going to slowly watch you do it." And then, you know what, I can't be there at that time, but, you know, I'm going to pop in when I can. I have another meeting. And then when they're doing it on their own, they pop in, and guess what? That teacher's doing it on their own. And that has been the trend that we've seen. When a teacher really sets a learning target, if it's something, you know, there's a lot of just day-to-day things, you know, how do I organize my email? That they, you know, just want those little things to learn on. But when it really comes to the targeted learning that they want to impact their instruction, we are finding that when they work with their coach over a period of time. Those goals are achieved, and now they're using them independently with their students. That's the biggest success that we're having.
Thank you.
Karen?
Thank you again, Terry. It was great. Did you ever look at bring your own device?
We did. We actually formed, again, as part of our strategic plan, we formed a Board Advanced Technology Committee. So that kind of took some members of our original committee, and then we actually had, we have two board liaisons, we have community members, parents. And we went out and we did a year-long research, really looking at one-to-one options. We did go out and look at a BYO option, and what we found the downside to it is the variance of the devices that were coming into the building. And we did not feel that if you really wanted to get kids in there and get them working and learning, it was an unfair burden to put on teachers to have to, is that, how does it look on your screen, and how does it work on your device, and are you set up correctly? And we just don't have the tech support to manage it. We've seen other districts who do it and are very flexible. We just did not feel that that was a good fit for us. I've seen some that are done where you give criteria, and then allow students to bring it in. If it meets that criteria, I think that can be very successful as well. But I think it's a little different when you're looking at, depending on the age level of the student as well, how independent are students at troubleshooting their own devices. It looks different for high school and upper-middle school versus third grade. So, and we had the, I guess, benefit of watching Maine 207, where all of our kids end up go one-to-one with Chromebooks, and that kind of shifted and kind of helped to make the decision for us.
That was another question that I had, is since you feed into the Maine High School, did you use the same model or approach, so that the students had that easy transition? So that was one of the data criteria, and you reverse engineered?
And I'll say that I met with our PTO leadership team yesterday morning, and the parents said, "Thank you so much for considering that our kids go to 207 after this, and that they have to buy a device when they get into freshman year. Thank you for considering that we have, you know, many of us have multiple kids, and as they go through, it's just, the consistency is so nice." And we actually worked it out with 207, where our kids, if we buy the compatible device, they will be allowed to bring it with them into 207, instead of being required to buy a new device if we go that route.
So then, do you charge the students in your district?
Currently, we do not, because we're not one-to-one. However, the preliminary financial options have been presented, and we are currently going, planning a survey for our parents to find out what financial commitment parents are willing to make, and what financial commitment the district is willing to make. And we're in, again, a unique situation where our kids do purchase the device when they enter freshman year. So it's the same community. So if they're buying it as part of their, you know, in lieu of their textbooks when they get to freshman year, are they willing to buy it a few years earlier and have additional years, and how can we offset some costs that way? Again, this is, these are just options that are being floated, no decisions, no recommendation has been made, but that is a consideration. And we have many parents who said, "I'd buy it for my kid in third grade if I knew that he could bring it back and forth and use it." Your demographics make a difference. I can say as now a new, you know, Elmhurst resident, that I, my daughter came home and said, "I'm the only one in my class who doesn't have their own device," you know, and say, "Sorry, honey, we share in this family." But it's, you know, it's good to get a sense of what the community is willing to share in order to move these types of initiatives forward.
Okay. So of course, as you move technology into the classroom, there's a need for the instructional technology coaching. As you move that into education, was there also a need to add additional technical support, to support the instructional?
Right. You know, I am very fortunate in District 64, where we actually have what are called building technologists. They're kind of our first line of defense in terms of troubleshooting, and I have one at each of our buildings. And then I have two, I have a network manager and assistant manager in my actual tech department, and then there's me. Since, I think in the last 20 years, there have been no increases in personnel in the tech department, while we have added thousands of devices. And we are reaching that point where, as part of our recommendation to move to one-to-one, we would look at providing some greater district-level support. Just the management of these devices is huge, and making sure that we can not only make sure teachers know how to use them, but that they work. And so that's one of the things that will be a consideration moving forward as part of the recommendation.
Shane?
I had a question about the pilot. You mentioned that the board looked at metrics about the pilot. What was the data? Was it student achievement data from map tests? Or how did you know that the greater student learning was occurring with the pilots?
We really encouraged our board to not get into student achievement data. It is, it would be a massive longitudinal study that you would really need to look at to pinpoint any change in student achievement and attribute it to one particular initiative in your district. There are many, many meta-analyses out there that do that work. However, for us, it was metrics of looking at our technology usage. Has that increased or decreased or flatlined? We also looked at the metrics related to the capacity of our teachers. Again, I refer back to that Lowdi Survey, that are our teachers progressing along that spectrum in relation to technology standards. And then a lot of it was through anecdotes and through observations of teachers. Teachers, one interesting anecdotal that a teacher shared is, he teaches eighth-grade social studies. And he said, every period, he said, first period, my kids' desks start out right about there in the front of the classroom. He said, "By eighth period, the desks have somehow managed to scoot 10 feet back in his room," and, which is an interesting observation. And once he got his smartboard in his classroom and he started actually bringing technology in, he noticed that the desks actually started shifting forward. To me, that's a clear sign of engagement in the kids. And that was from a teacher who knows his kids, and I found that to be powerful. Now, our board, yeah, yeah, that's nice, that's great, but is this really going to help our kids do better? And I think that what we have to, we have to trust in, in the long term, is that we've looked at high-impact instructional strategies, which research have shown to create the biggest gains in student learning. And how do we get those high-impact instructional strategies in the classroom is through leveraging technology. If I want to get a quick sense of where my students are through formative assessment, if I want to know at the end of a lesson, "How many of you got it? How many of you didn't get it? What do I need to revamp for tomorrow and revisit?" I can quickly have my kids use their devices, log into Sakrative, and I've got a quick two-minute survey, quick two-minute assessment, I have that data, I can adapt my instruction for tomorrow. That's where technology comes in. And if I use formative assessment, that's what's been proven to increase test scores. So it's the big picture about learning, and that's what we really tried to get our board to focus on. And, you know, we want metrics. We want to be able to share to our community that, yeah, our kids are going that, yeah, our kids are going to continue to achieve and improve their achievement over time because of these investments that we've made, and what is the return on our investment? And, and I get that, and it's a hard line to walk. And, but I think over the long term, and especially with Common Core, you can't teach the Common Core without technology. It's part of it. It's embedded within it for the first time ever. Our standards include kids being able to manipulate and utilize multimedia. They have to demonstrate their learning through access to multimedia resources, evaluating online resources. They have to do that as part of that, of those new standards. And that's why we, I don't think we can afford to, to delay that for test scores. In my, that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Chris?
At a high level, when you're talking about making the case, what would you, I mean, I don't know if you know this number or not, but, but the estimate and breakdown on, on kind of resources dedicated, you know, spent, spend on, on hardware and software, devices versus development?
You know, it's hard because they really go hand-in-hand, but I will say that I would, three years ago, I would not have recommended one-to-one in my district. We didn't have the capacity. It would have been one of those other unsuccessful stories of a district spending too much money on devices and they go unused, or kids play games or watch videos. And I can say with confidence to my board three years later that our teachers have the capacity. Our students have the capacity, and they're ready for it. So it's been an investment in terms of staff. You know, those FTEs are year-to-year. You pay for them every year. We know that. And as the capacity increases, the need for devices increases. And I will say that looking at, we were, we're a Mac district. I was, I spend $1,100 on a MacBook Pro. We can't, we were having carts of those in all of our buildings. I can get four Chromebooks for every MacBook Pro. That was, that was being financially, you know, financially sound, but still giving the kids a device that would help their learning. And that choice has, has helped balance that, those expenditures greatly. So last year when we piloted, this current year when we piloted, I took, how many MacBooks am I planning on replacing? Here's the dollar amount. How many Chromebooks can I get for it instead? And I quadrupled my devices. And, and that's how we were able to move the initiative forward.
But if you, when you ran your pilots, you know, there's a cost of the hardware and the software, and then there's a cost of the coaches that you had to hire. And I mean, is that a 50/50 kind of split? Or, I mean, I, I'm not, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but my point is, is just that the investment isn't just the device that you put in somebody's hand. It has to, so when you're looking at your budget, when you're advising on rolling out, how much of that is hardware purchase versus how much is people?
You know, again, I, I would say from new staffing, as part of this initiative, was the coaches. So if you look at seven FTEs, and you know, you take their average salary plus benefits, and you look at your pay scale, and you look at that on an annual basis, you know, for stuff, for my, a district of my size, we have 4,300 kids approximately. We have eight schools. I manage a budget of about a million dollars.
Okay.
And I would say of that million dollars, I would say probably 60% of that is hardware.
Sure.
Then there's, you know, applications and licensing and that kind of stuff. So on an ongoing basis, you know, you're looking at seven FTEs, and, and you can't discount that we also have our tech support staff as well that we, that we pay for on an annual basis. So if you, if you look at that, just as if you look at anything, you know, education, the largest expenditure is your personnel.
The people.
And that's your greatest return. And, you know, I could throw, you know, a recycled device, you know, that cost me, you know, $150, you know, threw a Groupon for a recycled Chromebook in front of a kid and get just as great a return out of someone who's well-trained.
The device becomes irrelevant at some point.
Transparent. That's the goal.
So the second set of questions, or questions are just around the pilot. When you ran the pilots, how did, how did you get in, I mean, how did they get into the pilot? Did teachers volunteer for the pilot? Was it selected a group of, a class or a building?
For the one-to-one pilot or the coaching pilot?
Your initial pilot where you had three, I mean, I'm assuming you rolled these out kind of to get, so your first pilot where you ran with three coaches?
Yeah. So the three buildings that were chosen, again, we said, okay, here's our two, we have two middle schools. It's a 50/50 shot. And I talked to staff. I talked to the principal. We had a principal changeover in one of our buildings, and we felt that that might not be a great place to run a pilot. So we actually ended up choosing the other middle school. We had, you know, two large elementaries, and we, you know, similar kind of criteria we went through. What, what building would give us the best data to let us know if, if technology coaching is really going to work? And so that, it was, you know...
But participation in the pilot, so...
For teachers to participate with coaches.
Yeah, you put the coach in the building, and then was it, everybody's going to get these devices, and therefore you really should use this coach? Or is it, it's a resource that's there? Do you, I mean, how do you get, it's a chicken and the egg?
Right. So let me clarify one thing. When we implemented the pilot for the coaches, we did not increase devices. We didn't even have Chromebooks at that time. We were, you know, we were adding some, we went with our existing technology, and same across the board in all of our buildings. The only delta was that we added coaches and three of them. And we wanted to see what was going to be the impact. And it was, it was voluntary to work with your coach. Now, there were faculty meetings where they led some trainings, and, you know, by default, they were, you know, required to be there. But it was through trust-building, some goal-setting with their principals as part. What we found is all of our teachers that were on their evaluation cycle, who set goals with their principals, actually made technology part of their goals. And that really facilitated that relationship. Our principals met weekly with our coaches to really ensure that it was a trusting relationship. These people cannot be perceived as administrators. They really need to be seen as peers. And when they're seen as peers, and they're one of them, and they're here to work with them, that was their biggest selling point. And we worked a lot with our coaches on marketing. What can I do for you? How can I, how can I show you one thing? How can I work with one first-grade teacher over here that will pique the interest of this first-grade teacher over here? And it was through, it was, it was a grassroots effort.
Yep. So it wasn't subject-specific either. So it wasn't like, we're going to take this class, and we're going to create a pilot with this class. It was...
It was an entire building.
People-based. It started with coaching.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. I appreciate, I appreciate it.
Next up, we have two of our teachers from the middle school level. Charlotte Kula, who's at Churchville Middle School, and Frank Dahman, who's at Sandberg Middle School, who are two of our early adopters, two of the guinea pigs that, that took on the pilot status and have had some great experiences. As you, as you know, both Charlotte and Frank are really true leaders in our profession, particularly in this district, partly because they are great teachers. They have a great deal of credibility. They, they really are wonderful in the classroom. We're very lucky to have them. And their peers see them, their colleagues see them, as influential people to pay attention to. And as a result, both of them were helpful to, to David and Kathy and my, and me, as we started to talk about technology in the district at the middle level. There was so much enthusiasm with the things that they said. I wanted to make sure they had a chance to share that enthusiasm with you. It is infectious. I hope you'll find, in a good way. And so I want to first start off with Charlotte, and she'll give some of her experiences, and then we'll just segue to Frank after that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charlotte Kula. I teach sixth grade English at Churchville Middle School. I think it's important to note that I've been teaching since 1977. Oh, I'm an oldie. But I have to tell you, for years, we've been hearing that technology was going to change teaching. It was going to change the classroom. This year, I believe it totally, and I'm so excited about it. We were fortunate, my colleagues, I have two other English teachers at sixth grade, with whom I shared 30 Chromebooks. So basically, what we did is initially, we started with 10 in each classroom, thinking, well, we'll do a lot of small group things. We were excited about that, but because the kids were just like so all over these Chromebooks, we realized quickly that we were going to have to find times when we could each take the full 30 and work with them. The students quickly adapted, but I have to tell you myself, the advantages over Chromebook versus laptop are, it have to do with urgency of learning. The kids can take a Chromebook, open it up, and it's like an iPad. Any of us who owns an iPad knows it's instant on, instant off. And whereas laptops, literally, they can turn on a laptop, and I can do a mini lesson in the time that it takes for everything to load. And then, the opposite is true in closing the thing. So the, right there, the time savings was incredible. But then I think everything beyond that goes to the Google platform that we were working in. The fact that we could share our work became a great part of, I think, the motivation that students were showing me in ways I had never seen kids show a love for writing. I mean, I have one class where I have 14 boys and three girls. I'm telling you, those 14 boys normally would give me all kinds of faces when I would say, "Okay, we're going to start an essay." And, you know, the whole fact that they'd have to push a pencil across paper was painful physically, muscularly, but I'd give them a Chromebook, and they were all over it. And an anecdote that I can share with you is that we piloted during the second quarter last, so it's been like a quarter since we've been using them on a daily basis. But Friday, we had an in-class essay to do, and students came prepared with their notes and so forth. And I know Sooners said, "Okay, let's get started. Take your materials out." And I had four boys. It's like they planned this beforehand. They said, "Mrs. Kula, can we get Chromebooks?" And I explained that, well, you know, it's not our pilot time. And they said, "Yeah, but it's their free first period." And they knew exactly which teacher had them. And basically, they were so motivated that, okay, I let them loose, and they found the Chromebooks, and they brought back what they needed. So you can see the excitement in students for using the Chromebooks, and then writing was no problem for them. They, they were in their element. The cooperation that's available also through the Google applications, especially like Google Doc, is also a part of the excitement. I have to say that it extended my workday in a very different way. I always take home papers to, you know, comment on and so forth at night, but I wasn't commenting in isolation. I actually would go on into Google Docs so it could open up student work, and I would find that sometimes they were working on it as I was looking at it. So we actually could have like a little bit of a dialogue in the comment section. But I also found that the writing always seemed to be ongoing. Kids weren't satisfied with just giving me one writing. They would write and say, "Would you look at it tonight?" Fully implying that they would go in and revise again. And I actually had to get kind of firm and say, "Okay, now Thursday's our deadline for sure. There's no more revision." And what teacher doesn't want kids to revise? But it was to a point where you could see that this was a living document, and they wanted to continually improve it. To me, that's phenomenal, and that's what, that is what learning is about. Another part that's exciting, because we can share, is Mr. Coulter and I share a class, and the kids would voluntarily share the paper, not only with me, but also him. So now they get two teachers commenting on a paper, which is great. And I could also have insight into some of the students that he's working with, because they would open it up to me as well. The, of sharing also took on a life of its own in that we went into presentation mode, and I'm asked students to go into this one presentation where I'd put us some templates for some vocabulary development, and asked them each to choose a slide to develop for the class. And then the next day, we worked with the concepts that they actually developed in slides. So now all of a sudden, we had everybody's work that we were looking through, and that became the focus for learning versus me getting up in front of them and leading them. They were actually leading themselves through that. I think the other nice part about this is that students had a real audience for each other. Like when a slide wasn't done, this is a collective work, right? And all of a sudden, there's this hole in the slide, in this collective work. They realize a greater sense of responsibility to the whole, in a much different way and targeted, but not intimidating way, because they all of a sudden could see that, oh, there's nothing up there. And now, there's nothing to share with everybody. So that became kind of a lesson, I think, that they learned as well from the community of learning that was taking place. The fact that all their products stay online, I mean, I still have papers from what they did in second quarter, and anytime they do anything in Google, the fact that it's there and it's there all the time, I can see is a treasure for them, because they can go back and look at their work and reflect, see how they've grown. It also means that next year, with their permission, of course, I can also go back to papers and use them as models for other kids. So it's, we've got this now resource that we're all jointly building and using together. Beyond the students themselves, though, as a teacher who's involved in a committee looking at material adoptions for next year possibly, I see that in all the programs that we're reviewing, there's a tremendous technology and research component in, in them all. And the fact that we might have more access to the tools that would allow us to do that research is exciting. And it means that if, if, and what we end up adopting, we'd know that we'd be able to utilize all of the program and not just some of the program. So, and that includes online reading, research databases, and writing tutorials, and writing products, templates and so forth that they have. But I always like to go to the students for feedback, and I got an email from Isabel. This was on February 18th, so you know that it's after the pilot, right? But this Isabel demonstrates, I think, that kind of enthusiasm that student had, students have for writing because of the Google Docs that we're working in. She wrote me, this is at 7:42 at night, and I have to say, this is what's really changing technology, is there no, there aren't any hours to the day anymore. You know, everybody's accessible 24 hours a day, and that's a good and a bad thing. But she says, "Hi, Mrs. Kula. I've just finished writing the Earth paper you told me to do, or told us to do tonight. I practically did a whole response. I shared it with you. Look at it ASAP?" Question mark, exclamation mark. "I'm proud about how I wrote it." How can you not look at it, right? And it's so exciting to know that they can talk with us even though the day's technically done. So, do you have any questions for me as a teacher?
Can I make us, well, let's just see what the board feels about this. What if we hear from Frank, and then have you two share the mic as we ask questions? I, I think it'll be interesting to hear both of your perspectives on the questions we have. Is that, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Frank Dahman. I'm an eighth grade English teacher and social studies teacher at Sandberg Middle School. And like some of the people before me, I could talk to you about this for about four or five hours, but I'm keeping it to like a page of notes. So if I'm getting too long, give me like a signal. I was very lucky because in my past life, before I was a teacher, I was a senior systems administrator in an IT department. So technology and I are kind of like old friends, and so I was ready to jump in on this. The kids, of course, live in a 21st century world. They were ready to jump in. In fact, my class was the one that threatened to hold Dr. John's ransom, like keep him to get the Chromebooks back. So, but I, I quickly discouraged that, of course. And a general note, I echo everything that Charlotte had to say about writing. It was, it was really exciting for us. It made it much easier for the students to actually drive their learning for a couple of reasons. They were very engaged. My class is 30-strong, and when they were working with those Chromebooks, you could hear a pin drop. They were... They were all clicking away. I mean, you couldn't hear a pin, you could hear clicking. And if you get a chance to talk to Jeff Gale or Amy Reid, they got to witness one of my young ladies in class get up and walk over and say, excuse me, hey, to another student, check my paper, I'm not sure if my character's dynamic enough and if their voice is consistent. Can you check that out? And I'm just, I'm like so choked up, it was beautiful. And so they were very engaged and it gave me a lot of design possibilities for their learning that I wouldn't have with a copy machine, an Elmo pen and paper. Things that I could do in the classroom that was student-driven. For example, in my social studies class, I did an inquiry-based learning activity where they did an independent study of immigration and the impact of immigrants on Chicago. And they went to the National Archives, they went to museum sites and with authentic documents, were able to make a case for the impact of immigrants. And then, like we heard before, I did frequent checks of learning, Socrative, online forums, quick, instant checks. Here we go, I did this, do you understand what I'm saying? And I would get an anonymous, and that's the important part, anonymous reports from the kids as to whether they understood, you know, multiple choice question, whatever short response, and I could instantly know on the screen, okay, you guys got it, we can move on, or uh-oh, what's the issue? Something, something isn't quite happening here. And I didn't go on, I could stop and say, there's a disconnect, what can we do? You know, so I'm not losing kids as we're moving forward in the instruction. I had kids doing homework on their smartphone while they're waiting for the plane, which was kind of interesting and nice at the same time. But probably the most powerful tool for me as a teacher was this program called HAPARA. And it let me solve the problem that most teachers face, which is space and time. I can't get to all the kids because I have to walk and get there. With HAPARA, I have a screen with thirty screenshots showing me what the kids are doing. I have access to all their documents, all their, everything that they've done at any moment. And so I could, from my desk, do quick checks of every kid, see are they on task, are they doing what I'm asking, are they getting the learning activity of the day, are they meeting my, you know, particular learning target? Instead of walking to six, I was checking twenty, sometimes even thirty, I could focus on those kids I know that needed a lot of redirection or I'm working on a skill that I know is a particular challenge for them. And if they're way off, I could get up and walk over there and know that I'm investing the best time that I have with my kids for that day. And probably the coolest thing that I did in the entire second quarter was I taught from my couch in my home. My daughter was sick, I had to stay home, it was my turn in the rotation. And so I had a paper due in two days, I logged into HAPARA and I watched my kids work in the classroom. And I redirected, answered questions. And when I first logged in, saw some kids were playing football on a website. So I put a pop-up message, it popped up bing, and it said, by the way, Mr. Dolman is watching. And they were all back. But that's the fun part. But the actual powerful part was this. I was reading as they were typing, I was redirecting kids, they could ask me questions, I could help them out. As my daughter's taking a nap, because she's got the flu, I was teaching from my laptop. And it was, for me, ease of mind because as teachers, we worry. When we have to miss a day of school just before a big test, a big paper, we want to know our kids are doing what they need to do to be successful. So I was able to, from my couch, check on my kids and teach them, so that was really great. And so the end result with this was I saw students' confidence improve in their, in themselves and their ability to learn. I was easily monitoring their, their learning throughout the whole process. Students that were behind, I could see it without waiting for the, for the due date to come and not get anything, and I could encourage and help out. And just, I always knew what was going on. I could do frequent checks of understanding and learning. So I saw levels of conversation rose. I couldn't, and, and the thing that's important is I was in their world. I just scratched the surface, I just dipped my toe in the pool. I was in their world, twenty-first century classroom. And we were all just like energetic to come to class every day and get going. And what we did and the Chromebooks couldn't replace a good teacher. But man, I can tell you, it enhances the teaching, it really is a great tool for greater success for the kids because they were just raring and ready to go, so. But, and if you guys ever come by Sandberg, I can show you some stuff, feel free to stop by and I'll, I'll show you some things we did, so. But, and that's an open invitation for real, so, yeah. So, do you have any questions?
Before I open it up to questions, I just let me say, it's great to hear from our teaching staff that, sounds like we're on the right track here. And, and it is great to hear that because we're gonna spend a lot of the community's money.
It's gonna be well worth it. And everything we buy, this is like night and day, it's just so clear that we're making gains because we, we're engaging kids and that's fundamentally what we have to do.
They're different.
Yeah, that, that, that's great. I mean, and that, this kind of affirmation is, is very important to the board. So with that, let me, let me open it up for questions, please. Emily?
I do want to reiterate what Jim said, that, you know, we've heard from Dr. Johns and Dave Smith, stories like the ones you've told, but it's so much more powerful to hear it just directly from you guys about your experience with the pilot, so thank you, I really do appreciate that. Can you tell me about your professional development with the pilot and what kind of support you had during the pilot?
The pilot was second quarter and I think the Chromebooks came like at that time. And so Kathy did, I thought, a great job of like being a coach to everybody. I, whenever I had a question, I could either email her or, and find that she would answer me or, through email, or she would come over to Churchville and we'd have one-on-one time together and she'd lead me through some things. And then also simultaneously, she had some professional development going on with the Google Apps. And I love it, this is like, I think at least it's the first, my, first experience for me where we actually have some tiering taking place. So you have a choice of three different classes based on what your experience level is. And I just recently just started on the most basic because I know, I probably know much of it, but where I'm really learning is hearing what other teachers like Frank and others are doing with the same technology. And so we're seeding ideas among ourselves besides learning the how-to, because I think the how-to's pretty easy, you can go to a tutorial mostly for that. But it's the seed, the creative ideas that we're all using the tool for.
Focusing on learning targets, focusing on standards, not putting a different form of presentation in front of them, but a better way for them to access it. And, yeah, so, and, and the thing that was really critical is Kathy was around all the time. She stopped by and was like, how's it going? What do you need? How, you know, and so she was very vocal and advocating for us in what we needed. And then, you know, like you, like Charlotte said, we, we shared a lot of information to make sure that we were, we were doing stuff for ourselves. And there are other opportunities coming up, like this weekend to learn, you know, some things, some more things about Google and stuff, so it's gonna, it's an exciting time.
And I know it's influenced what we've been doing in our building, you know, we've had some building staff development now with the same Google applications and there's one other point I wanted to make. Oh, what was really cool is as we went from one quarter pilot group to another, we had opportunities to, for us who had been on board first to share some of the tips that we had kind of learned just through experience. And those are always, you know, they can't always be written down.
You know, tiered, entry level, advanced level, that kind of stuff, you know, too. So, yeah.
So that was good, there was a lot of communication going on. So we've been learning from each other in many ways.
I, I like what you said about seeding the knowledge and I'm wondering, how do we take that to the next level so that every student could have what Isabel is talking about, you know, that kind of engagement and what are the steps we take to do that? What about Brian? Are they involved in the same pilot? So the same kind of things going on with Brian too? Okay. Okay, great.
Yes, so I, I'm, Kathy can speak to this better, but I'm pretty sure that every grade level at every school is involved in a pilot. So it's a matter of which group of teachers at the grade level has stepped forward in saying, I'll try it.
And then as far as seeding the knowledge and how we're gonna take it to the next level, I think that what we have to start to make sure we do is that professional development, making sure that this teaching doesn't replace, or that the, the, the technology doesn't replace the teaching, it enhances the learning and really making sure that we are focused on the ball, not on the bells and whistles and the gizmos, but what is my particular learning purpose for this? How can I use this? And this is probably the most powerful thing. I've got, you know, thirty kids in a classroom that are taking control of their learning, meeting a standard or, or a learning outcome, but getting there through their own personal drive, through their own personal interests and stuff. And I can't do that with a piece of paper or, you know, a laptop cart of ten. I can do it more powerfully with a, okay, I want you guys to investigate immigration in Chicago and kids going, well, I got Irish immigrants in my background, I've got, you know, Italian immigrants, and they can start taking on their interests, but they're all going for that same learning target. And so with that professional development of learning how we can do, use these tools to make it better, knowing that a quick information check, do the kids get it? Okay, I gotta stop because they're missing something. That was huge for me because otherwise I'd have to say, take out a Post-it or a note card, fill in the answer to this question, and then at night I gotta look through them and say, how many kids get it and how many don't? I don't have to do that. I know in seconds if I gotta stop or if it's safe for me to move on. And then I've got my local experts, my kids that know, and they, they take, I see kids leading that never would have jumped out, that are now like the guy or the girl, you know? And so there's a lot of stuff we can do with it, but we've got to make sure that we keep our eye on the prize, if you want, you know, and that we're going for the right thing.
Erin?
I have several questions. Charlotte, you're at Sandberg and I know that they have the-
Churchville.
I'm sorry, Churchville.
Frank is at Sandberg.
What I meant to say, with the media labs. So is there advantages, disadvantages, linkages with the media lab, with the Chromebooks? Is it, do you use them together or no?
I know Dan Coulter has been in the media lab. I see the media lab having a different purpose than the Chromebooks. I see the Chromebooks as being kind of ubiquitous, it can, they can be anywhere. The lab itself, I know when we do like a radio show, we'll go to the lab because we want everybody together with the screens and so forth, the large screens so people can participate in not only an individual way, but a large group way. I'm not, personally, I don't use the lab as much as I do the Chromebooks.
Okay. And thank you both. This was wonderful to hear from the teachers. So Charles, can you remind me, did we, did we have teachers volunteer and/or look at teachers that were tech savvy or it was just organically that, that's what happened?
We asked for volunteers and then we found a way through the schedule to make sure that everyone who volunteered to be a part of the pilot actually got their hands on the ability to use the Chromebooks. So everyone who asked got a chance to use them.
And remind me how many schools we used for the pilot?
We used all three middle schools were part of the pilot.
Okay.
Yeah, so we started the middle school, it's the right size, we had a different vision at the high school at the time.
Yeah.
We tried something a little different at the middle where we kept the carts on, I'm sorry, the Chromebooks on carts instead of a take-home model that we had at the high school. And so the, every team was allocated a cart for a period of time to, to share.
Okay, and so with that, I'm trying to get a sense of listening to Terry and seeing the rollout and then looking at what we did and then just, you know, our small piece and then moving it forward. So, you know, let's say at minimum it was three schools because we had middle schools and then we had all the instructional support that Kathy has, has traditionally provided and then we had the high school, right? All at the same time with one instructional coach?
Yes.
To this day, okay. And then the second piece is with technology support. I know that the team is stretched thinner and it makes sense intellectually, if you will, but even more so with Terry's presentation, you know, hence the question that, that I asked. I mean, you can't just add the instructional coaches. When you're adding technology, you have to make sure you've got the technical support. So it just, I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that and if it's not true, that there's an opportunity for us to clarify if there's, if that's not true.
I think David agrees with me, there's, there's, there's need both for the, the physical device side, the boxes and wires, I think I'm stealing Dave's term, and then for the coaching side where it's the more human-to-human contact to try to increase both the use of technology, but more importantly, to use technology to better access the instruction of, of skills and standards.
Margaret?
Actually, I, I think my question was answered, so I'm good, thank you.
Anyone else? Can I, John?
I'm listening to this and I'm just really, I would say it's great to have the teacher leaders to be the leaders of this. And it seems like what we had in finance committee a year, a year and a half ago was a wait, don't get in love with the technology, see how it goes and everything. And now we've got the pilots run by the professionals, the people are making a difference. And I think that's just great. It seems like we're, would you say this a time of significant change in instruction, education? We're witnessing something, I mean, this period? Go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's, there's a big difference between the pilot of these Chromebooks and the, when we purchased the laptops, let's say. We're, we piloted this with the specific idea of how are we going to make our kids better? How are we gonna teach them more? How can we use this as a tool to enhance learning? Whereas before it was, hey, here's, here's a bunch of laptops, you know? And so we struggled to make sure that we could make that really meaningful in all particular areas. And so I think we, we set the, you know, Kathy and, and Dr. Johns helped to set the tone for us in a way that made it very constructive. Keeping it limited in the beginning, I think, was helpful because with a small base of people, we were sharing ideas, we're talking, you know, the, the kids knew that they were, you know, not guinea pigs is the right word, but let's see what we can do in your world. And, and, and so I think the tone in the beginning and not just buying stuff really helped us to say and to see that we're not just adding a, a screen to, to, in front of the kid's face, we were actually using this for instruction, we were using this to check for understanding. And that, I think, was a big help for us that, that started this, so.
And I think the pilot is showing us, as I said in the beginning, education is changing drastically with this new technology. It's not new technol, it's the technology we're bringing in. And as teachers piloting, we could see that, you know, we have to rethink how we structure our, our lessons because there's gonna be a much more student-driven lessons than teacher-driven. And yet, at the same time, what part do we control? What part do we guide? Because, you know, we have the experience, we have the age and so forth behind us. And how much do we let the kids drive? And there's, there's a balance that we have to be figuring out. And then there's the whole time issue. You heard in Isabel's email, ASAP. I mean, these, these kids are living in a world where things are instant and we have to figure out how, how do we as a group of learners come to some kind of agreement in terms of what are, how we share our time and our comments and so forth? It's very exciting, but it's a new age for sure.
We're facing a new reality. We really are. With PARC coming down, with Common Core coming down, we as teachers spend a lot of time looking over our future, our kids' future, trying to figure out how can we, how can we meet the needs of these kids that have to be fluent in reading on a computer screen for an academic purpose? Being able to write a short response based upon that reading on a computer screen for an academic purpose. And this has, has helped us to understand it. And the idea of differentiating is now infinitely easier for me as a teacher because I don't have to create four or five leveled texts linked to pieces of paper, like, you know what I mean? I can create a dynamic learning environment for the kids that gives them that choice and I can guide them. I'm an education manager at that point for them because I set the tone, I give a mini lesson and then I manage them and do a little herding to keep them going in the right direction, which is kind of the way that lets them really get to where they need to be, so.
And there will be some caveats with this. I could see, we have to be very careful not to always put kids just in front of a screen. We need to continue to develop face-to-face communication and the, the social norms that go with that. And then also not expecting them to be in front of a screen all night as well, you know, doing homework. There's gonna be a balance. And Time Magazine had, just had a couple issues ago, the whole idea of the mind revolution. We have to, we're probably gonna see some new coursework, you know, dealing with meditation. We gotta get away from technology at the same time that we're embracing it. This, it's, it is a very different time, but I think our community's ready to embrace it and we just need to be cognizant of all the-
We don't wanna settle loose in that world.
Different facets.
Dave, I, I went back and I looked at our discretionary staffing options, and this seems like it's tied into one of them, instructional tech support, professional development, two of them, professional development coordinator. I mean, it looks like there's a way forward that we're hearing from administration, from What happens now to make this apparent revolution happen for 8,000 students in our district? What are the next steps?
You want me to answer that tonight, John?
Eh, just a couple broad points about-
Well, I don't, you know, obviously, resource is an issue.
Yes.
And, you know, there's great stuff going on. We have teachers that are enthused, obviously. There's good stuff going on with technology, but we are short some of the manpower issues and some of the tech support issues and professional development issues. So, you know, I think there are things we can do to move the ball forward, but I don't think you're gonna, you really, this district right now doesn't have the capacity to do transformational systematic change on a district-wide basis in a short period of time. So, you know, I wish it was different, but it's just not. And, and I'm not sure that's not all bad. I think there's a cautionary tale from Terry tonight about how fast you move and that you're careful and you just don't initiate a bunch of things without bringing staff aboard. And I think the nice thing about the Chromebooks was, at the middle school, it went slow. They were ready to accept the Chromebooks, they were ready to pilot them. That happened, they embraced that. That didn't happen at the high school right now, you know? And so that's okay. You have to go slow and make sure staff is ready for that kind of initiative, that we have those discussions so everybody's on the same page. So I think there's a lot of initial discussion that has to happen besides just talking about the resources. I think resources is a part of that, but I think getting everybody to feel the synergy of moving this forward in whatever direction it's gonna go and everybody being on the same page is also important because you can throw money at this and if everybody's not gonna embrace it, then we've fallen short of what we're gonna do. And I think that takes time and it takes a lot of dialogue. I think you heard that, that they needed time to put in their classroom, to see what happens with the students, to talk to their colleagues and say, yeah, this is a great idea, or no, it's not. So, you know, I thi, I think both things go on a parallel course and I think we're moving there. I think the discussion on discretionary funding for staffing that's coming up in the next few meetings is gonna be important to say, okay, what is the scope and how far do we go? And again, we've gotta go back, and this is, as exciting as tech is, I've told you it's not the only item that's on our list that I think we need to look at. So it's gonna be some tough discussions about how do we effectively utilize the resources we have.
It's not the tech that's exciting. It's hearing these, about these engaged kids and it seems to be a very demonstrable form in front of us and that's, that's what I'm hearing, that the timeless element is good teachers leading, so.
Chris?
I guess this touches John and kinda where you were going a little bit too. And I look at what you need for success. And so you need a piece of hardware, you need a platform, and you need, you know, a coach as far as support goes, I mean, creating that ecosystem and that vision for how you roll this out. We've got Google Apps as a platform, we've got, you know, Chromebooks as, as the hardware. We've got Kathy's, our resident coach. Am I missing anything? I mean, are there, and again, I hear you saying, keep it simple. I mean, give us some basic tools and let the teachers do the magic, which is, you know, my belief, but, you know, what, what else? I mean, are there certain apps that were kind of short? I mean, what, is there anything that would have enhanced besides time, you know, your, your experience?
What I would say was most helpful for me was having that management application of HAPARA to allow me to quickly manage what my students were doing. And I, and I do have to say with, with having the Chromebooks for one quarter, I really wasn't able to take a lot of, get, get into a lot of the stuff that is probably out there. There is a whole world of education linked to Google and stuff. And I think that one of the things that is key for us is not only the coaching and the, but that professional development, that ability for us to identify the target, identify the learning goal and standard, and then find the best tool that is avail, available for us to meet that need, whether it's Kathy going out and spending all her time or whatever. But, um, you know, I, I think that we need that, that part in it, doing it, doing it right as opposed to just doing it quickly and throwing a bunch of technology at us. If we had our choice, I know Charlotte would, Charlotte would agree, we have a real opportunity here to transform the learning of our kids in Elmhurst. And we just wanna make sure we don't just get to it right away, but do it in a way that is powerful and deep, you know, long-term and impacts what we do daily as opposed to what we do monthly. You know what I mean?
Yeah, in fact, HAPARA was something even that I personally did not use. It came kind of later in the quarter and I didn't really feel like I needed to make sure all my kids were on task because I could see they were on task. I mean, we were writing papers and the one student who wasn't on task, I basically told him, you either get on task or you lose the privilege of the Chromebook. And that put him right back on task again and kept him on task. But the key, I think, is what I was hearing among my colleagues is that we, we're really asking Kathy, don't give us any more, just let us adapt because this is like a huge change for us. And for us, the ability to meet and talk and share ideas with the, what we had was like plenty. Because I think all of us wanna get to that point where we are transforming the classroom, not just applying, you know, a typing skill or something like that. But that takes a lot of creative endeavor. And so I know it maybe sounds simple to say three things. They're all very expensive things, of course, that you listed, but I think for now, that, that would really set us off in a, on a really nice course.
We could spend a lot of time learning from each other at this point.
Right. It's not a one-size-fits-all solution. And this is grassroots.
Yeah, and the HAPARA for me was the file management because when, I own as an English teacher as well, I did a lot of papers and then getting them to share with me, the, the file management that HAPARA gave me, gave me access to all of their stuff at any point, which for me was the big thing, more than like, like Charlotte's saying, the classroom management. That was just the interesting part, you know, when I'm sitting at home on the couch. But on the file management and having access to their learning and their products, the product of their learning at any given moment was really important for me because I, I had to put limits on my office hours. You know, I will not be able to check your papers at nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night because I sleep, you know? But, but they-
I wish you have to turn off my phone at ten.
There was more communication between students and between students and teacher than I've ever had. Comments on papers, emails sent back and forth, messages popping up. It, it was, the communication piece was, was actually really powerful in the classroom.
One of, this person isn't here tonight, but there's a Brian teacher who actually before a test, the week before a test, she has office hours at night. She opens, opens up from seven to eight and kids may Google in or whatever the term will be. Chat for, within that hour. So as they're studying, if they have questions and so forth, they're communicating. That's what I mean by it's transforming learning, it's transforming education.
Does that kind of application help you as teachers collaborate too?
Yes, it does.
So I mean, you got a teacher and a student on a platform, or multiple students, but you guys use that yourselves to collaborate outside of, you know?
In Churchville, we, actually, within our sixth grade team, we go onto Google Docs and we created like a month-by-month curriculum communication tool for ourselves or application where I can go on and I know what social studies is doing, I know what science is doing, they know what I'm doing. So we've actually started to align a lot of the skills. So if I know social studies is summarizing, well, guess what? I can work summarizing in too so that kids are seeing that it isn't done just in, within content areas, but rather it's a skill that goes across content. And it embeds it and goes deeper and ingrains the skill much better.
Right.
And I think that's in part why our sixth grade is very successful, is that we are doing much more collaboration.
And in eighth grade, we, we meet throughout the summer, like every week, every other week, and now we're talking how, how we can meet now through Google Hangouts. We can be at home and work on a Google Doc together, be talking to each other over the computer or, you know, face-to-face conferencing. So we're talking about increasing communication between us, we're talking about who has common planned time with us in other buildings. And do we want to try to get ahold of them and have a hangout to talk about the upcoming, you know, embedded assessments or whatever we got coming up? So, you know, we're, we're starting to see opportunities to kind of bring the three buildings that are in different corners of our city and kind of shrink it down a little bit to allow us to collaborate together through common time when we're not in front of kids.
So this investment is in more than, it's more than just classroom-based, it's, it's professional development-based.
Right. And then we've also talked about having, I know Barb Algrim and I have talked about, you know, we're in different quarters, but if we're on the same quarter, we could have her reach class, eighth grade reach class, and my eighth grade reach class work collectively on projects, work on learning activities. We just didn't have the pilot at the same time, but we're excited if that happens, we could do cross-building learning between kids, between the different buildings as well.
Sure.
Imagine having three schools, students in three schools collaborating on a paper or some kind of report or whatever. It just, it would be so like real life, real world.
Sure. And this is a question for Charles. We've heard a lot on the English and the writing and, you know, I believe that technology gets applied in various ways, so in this discipline and social studies and whatnot. We've heard similar stories in math and science. I mean, obviously different ways of using the technology, but are we piloting there and have?
Yes, I don't recall if we have a science pilot going on, and, and I, I chose just to bring Frank and Charlotte.
Oh, this is awesome.
I knew their stories. I could line the room up with people who would like to talk. I do know at Sandberg, we have one math teacher whose work I've seen and was now teaching other teachers about the Google platform and using the Chromebooks, had an enormously successful pilot in math. Kathy, do you remember if we had anyone in science?
Yes, and I don't know if they, you know, some of the teachers shared and so I know that they started putting their data into a Google spreadsheet and they could see everybody's data instead of just looking at their finite set. They were able to see a much greater data pool.
So, so we are, we got many bases covered and that was part of how we set up the schedule of making sure that we incorporated everyone into the pilot is, is to make sure that we had kind of different things going on at different times during the school year. So unfortunately, it meant that Barbara Algrim up at Churchville and Frank weren't able to collaborate at the same time, but we're trying to get a mix of reactions.
Okay. Okay. And then, I mean, just to, John, to both of you, coming up in the pipeline on the, on the finance and ops side is, is a technology discussion. So last year, David had put together a set of slides, the, the goal is to roll those, so it's kind of a three-year forward-looking that we update. We are ending, we are nearing the end of the investment in the infrastructure, the access point, the bandwidth, getting the pipes big enough, which then leads to the logical discussion about what's next, how do we use this stuff? So I think in the context of that discussion, that's absolutely beyond just the discretionary piece. I think within technology and where we're allocating funds within our technology budget, the people aspect of that is something that's really gonna enter the conversation. I think so, that's, I think on the agenda as we start within, I think, for March in finance and then bringing that up to the, to the board table. So I would think that'll also be another part of this, a piece of this discussion.
Go ahead.
I just have one last comment. All the issues that we have been grappling with, with differentiation, classroom management, you know, class size, 21st century learning and, and, you know, for students and faculty, I see this as some solutions for it instead of saying, here's a, here's a solution in this silo, but something that crosses it. So just kind of put it out there, you know? We need to look at it differently than we have in the past. And then the other piece is, how much does this play a part with the Curriculum Technology Committee? Remind me with the, the planning piece and some of this.
Sure. The Curriculum Technology Committee meets several times a year and, and we're continually, we do a couple things. We, we share, like what Frank and Charlotte said was, was so beneficial. We look at directions that our rollouts are going. We've made some course corrections through the use of the CTC Committee. And it is already starting some readiness, as, as Dave talked about, it's important, and I think Frank mentioned this too, is, is to get people to want it before we provide it to them. And the CTC then enables us as a district to talk about some opportunities that, that technology affords us. And now we're starting to get some real interest at the elementary level, so it's, it's, they want it before we give it to them. So now we can find out where are some areas, we can, we can study their needs, their requests, their hopes for the use of technology and how we can embed technology into their current learning activities and start to think ahead, what do we need to do to make that happen for their particular needs? So the CTC enables us to communicate more effectively, ensure the good parts, and then keep everybody posted because keeping, you know, these are the early adopters. We have some, some people who are a little slower to adopt and we wanna kind of keep the climate of technology, which we all know can be intimidating, kind of keep it at a comfortable spot for everybody. And the CTC gives us quality communication tool, and it's feedback that comes to the three of us as well. It's not just us dispensing knowledge. We really use it quite a bit for feedback back. And we also use the CTC to help us in the, every three years, is it three years? The revision of the district technology plan, which requirement of the state, we use their participation and feedback to help mold and shape that technology plan.
So just one last piece of it. So I'm once again remembering Terry's presentation where she said, we had a five-year strategic plan. So, you know, with a lot of different, various people and represent, representatives bringing in the full picture. And so I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, how do we do that? To John's point, to, you know, not just say, if we're gonna do innovation, you know, can we just check off a box? It's not that. It's, it's a very different animal.
At this point, we have a multi-year plan and at one point, I think we thought it was pretty solid and that it was gonna be stable over time. And literally every conversation I have, particularly with elementary teachers, I believe we have more and more capacity of our students at the elementary level, so the plan is changing virtually every time I sit down and have a tech conversation with teachers who are saying, this is no problem for my kids and they'll be better writers if they can, if they have this technology. We also had a number of our teachers sit down with the math teacher and see some of the cool apps that are cool, some of the very instructional and educational apps that we can find, they were cool. And, and that were really engaging for kids with some of our elementary, with, with some of our elementary teachers. So we're kind of opening the doors of opportunity for people.
Charlotte, Frank, your enthusiasm is absolutely contagious. Thank you very, very much. This was, this was such a great education for this Board of Education. And I'm sure Charles has figured out the next time he needs us to say yes to something, you'll be getting a phone call saying, can you come present to the board? So thank you very, very much for your time. We sure appreciate it. Next on our agenda is the approval of board meeting minutes from January 28th, 2014 and February 11th, 2014. Are there any changes to the minutes as proposed? Then hearing none, those minutes stand as presented. Next is board committee reports. The first is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. Shannon?
The curriculum committee met in February and we talked about, the first item was eighth grade reach math book. And I guess I'll start, give a little bit of background. A couple of years ago, maybe four years ago, there was a change made to our math curriculum. And now those students are in seventh grade and teachers are noticing that kids are ready for, for more, these reach math students that are now in seventh grade. And the administration is recommending that we offer geometry next year to eighth grade reach students. And if you look at other districts, there are top-performing districts in this area are already offering this, eighth grade geometry, so this is not something new. The administration, I mean, Charles, correct me if I'm wrong, thinks of this as keeping par pace with our peer districts. And then eventually our seniors would be able to take possibly a dual-credit course through University of Illinois, receive credit for college by taking a higher-level calculus course. And we also talked about how this really, similar to what Charlotte is talking about, this is coming from the teachers, this is teacher-directed, noticing that students can do more in math, our high-level math students. This is coming from the teachers, this is teacher-directed, noticing that students can do more in math, our high-level math students. So I, I, the, the committee had confidence that the implementation would be successful. Because it's not a top-down approach, it's teacher-directed, which is what we want. And the teachers, eighth grade reach teachers need to do a lot of professional development. And Charles has outlined a plan for their development, work with the high school teachers, visiting the high school many times over the next several months. And, you know, one of the issues that has come up is, eighth grade reach math teachers will, will need to differentiate within that classroom. So that's something that's outstanding, you know, because there's going to be, within that reach group, there's different levels of ability. So that's something that we need to keep an eye on. Do you want to add something?
That's a great summary, I appreciate that. As Shannon indicated, we began accelerating our math curriculum several years ago when our current seventh graders were in fifth grade, or third grade. And they've been essentially a year ahead of all the previous classes, and they are performing quite well. And really need to have additional opportunity to continue to grow. And so we're excited to have this opportunity for them to learn geometry. We think after a great deal of scrutiny and consternation, that is the best fit for them. But as Shannon indicated, we have to put together a very robust professional development program to make sure these teachers are on par with geometry the same way they are in par with the, the current math that they teach. They were very instrumental in putting together their own professional development program for this, they're extremely excited about this opportunity. They, they know their kids can do it, they're excited to be able to bring new math concepts to their kids to open and continue to progress those children's learning. And, and as Shannon indicated, they want it, they, they really believe, they're confident that their kids can, can take on these challenges. We are extremely high-performing district when it comes to math instruction, math learning. And these kids are exceeding the learning of their peers that preceded them. And, and we need to put together courses that can challenge them and meet their needs and take them as far as they can go. Which ultimately, as Shannon indicated, this could get them to a Calc III or equivalent class their senior year, which makes them competitive with other, of their peers from some of the top districts, at least in this area, if not across the nation.
Just to make another comment about how this kind of forces the issue of doing something more at York, to, to have the program just continued.
Well, I, I think it's important, as John indicated, that, that it does cause change at the high school. I mean, this is a ripple effect that started years ago in elementary and will continue until these kids are seniors. There is a lot of work ahead, it's not just the three middle school teachers that are going to have to do a lot of work and preparation. But it's going to continue for, for the, throughout the classes going through the high school. So we're experiencing the changes from a couple of years ago being successful. And it causes a significant change in our, our curriculum.
Is this something that we're, that is anticipated that we'll be starting in the next, this upcoming school year? And is this a process, and I, I mean, you said the teachers have outlined their, any professional development or curriculum planning that is necessary? Is that a correct statement?
Yes, it will start next year, we have to, these, these kids have already, already have accomplished what would have been next year's math. So we have to make a change of some degree. And the professional planning, the professional learning that they're doing has already started, they've already worked with staff at the high school.
I'll continue real quick, so we talked, we talked about summer school dates, nothing big to report there, just, you know, kind of the same thing as last year. We talked about the park, which we, we covered that at our last board meeting in depth. Oh, I'm sorry, the one, the one thing I want to ask is, is somebody going to the Friday meeting for Lent, February 28th?
Margaret is, and Chris Welton is.
Okay, great, okay. And then invitation to, okay, invitation to curricular technology committee, the committee that, the CTC, the next meeting is in April, I believe it's April 9th. So this is an invitation, if you're interested, you can talk to Charles Johns, Curricular Technology Committee, that's it.
Any other questions? Then let's move on to the Finance and Operations Committee, Chris.
Okay, at the, at the last Finance and Operations Committee, we threw a number of items, January monthly financial report. We are on plan, on budget, and Chris is just repeating it like the volleyball coach, right, every, every month, we're on plan, on budget. I think we have to give Chris credit for that.
That's what we're looking for.
Absolutely. And there, there's a project that the staff is working on, employee compensation letters, I think we touched on that over the past year or so, and talking about putting basically benefit statements, if you guys, if you've been working in the private sector, have seen these things. That, that try to capture the full value of the position. And, and so there's templates being worked on, and we, we should get another go-around at the next meeting. And we will be then bringing them to the board table at, at that point in time. So we, we discussed student fees as well, there was initial presentation of the fees. It will come to the, I think back to the Finance Committee in March. We had just gotten them and kind of needed some time to react to what we thought, basically, you know, Chris's, the administration's proposal is basically flat. It will come to the board table at the March board meeting, in late March, for first review and then finalized in April. So just to give you a heads up that that's coming. And then a couple of other pieces on, on updates. On the budget side, you know, we talked about the technology budget that I referenced earlier, that that process is kicking off. And in March Finance Committee, Dave Smith is going to come talk to us, and that's an opportunity for us to talk about, you know, the, the rolling kind of three-year budget and what happens when we've spent on our infrastructure. And I, I'm assuming that we're going to talk a lot about staffing and resourcing and whatnot, because technology is more than just boxes and wires. And, and then we also discussed the PMA projections, I think coming out of the last board meeting, we talked about the discretionary spending. And one of the questions was, you know, can we size the, can we size the box? You know, how much money can we allocate towards that list? And, you know, we had a discussion in the Finance Committee about having, you know, basically running a plus or minus balanced budget, I mean, less than 1%. Maybe some of these numbers are negative, that's our conservative case. You know, I also think you heard the case for some of the, for needs we have on the technology side. We also discussed the needs we have, you know, with, with Park and Pure and the assessments that are coming in and the strain that, that that's placing on our, our building level administration and, and teachers and throughout the district. And, and I, I think that amongst those of us at the meeting, you know, the kind of point, point of view had coalesced around kind of a four to five FTE ad at, you know, a total cost of in the neighborhood of $400,000 would, would be somewhat of a comfort level that we wanted to bring to the board is, is, you know, I think where we had kind of started to feel comfortable. And just wanted to throw that out to the rest of the board members as, I think, hoping to give Dave direction as he works through that list to talk about, you know, how much money does he have to spread around within those different options on that list? And so, you know, I think Shannon and Karen were there, I mean, if there's any feedback, I mean, I think I would like to, coming out of this evening, you know, give Dave some parameters on, on, you know, cost bucket that he has to use on that list as he considers what to do with it. What, you know, comments, observations, feedback on, on that thought around kind of a four to five FTE, $400,000 investment? And this will be annual, I mean, it will roll in, in subsequent years as well. And I can say I'm, I'm comfortable with that level, and if anybody wants to add.
I'll add, I mean, we had a lot of discussion around it, because you have to be careful on the FTE, if you will, and the dollar amount. So, I mean, that's kind of, you know, why we said 400,000 top, and, you know, we'll have to determine, depending on what position or, you know, what's required. It would be roughly four or five headcount, if you will. I mean, we talked about it from many different perspectives, just to give you a sense.
Yeah, and I had an interesting perspective that, that Teri had kind of brought up in their pilot, they committed for three years, enough time to get runway to get feedback. That's an idea or an option if, you know, the board's uncomfortable with, you know, an ad infinitum kind of commitment. And, and I don't know whether that does any good for Dave or not, but I mean, that's a thought that, you know, maybe it's, maybe we have a minimum commitment of three years to something that we would continue after that, if, if the board needs that to, to feel comfortable. But, but something to consider, but again, I mean, there were, some of you guys weren't at that meeting, how do you feel about that number? The point is, is just that you're running it near balance, plus or minus, it would probably turn the deficit, again, we've kind of loaded this with, with what we hope is a conservative case. But it would turn the deficit approaching a million bucks, maybe a little bit less than that, on a $110 million budget, so less than 1%. And the way we've been performing, you know, we fortunately managed the upside on that number. And given the needs of the district, do we feel like that number's just about right, too high, too low? What's a sense?
And I, I think a couple of things, one, I can't, that number, I think it's important that we have a guideline out there. I can't comment on the number if it's too high or too low, I think that's based off financially what we can afford. And, you know, based off what you've talked about, it sounds like that won't make too much of an impact, one way or the other, to our, our, our current financial structure. The one thing I would encourage is that when we talk about four to five FTEs, is that if at all possible, to be creative? So those four to five FTEs do not necessarily need to translate to four to five bodies, that it could be six bodies, it could be, you know, anything. So to be as creative as possible, to see if, if there's a way that we could leverage, maybe existing roles and add on to those. So we could maximize, because from an idealistic perspective, four to five is not nearly enough, okay? Yeah, from an idealistic perspective. But the challenge is, we also have to be fiscally aware and fiscally conscious, so that's what we can afford. So how can we maximize that? And that's what, you know, I think we would need to have a lot of people kind of weigh in on, you know, how do we maximize that number?
I kind of rethought my comment, so. That's actually better though, after the last time I saw the PMA projections, that's better than I thought it was going to be, so.
I'm just saying that, you know, as a board member, am I comfortable, kind of, given our fund balance where it is and given the projections, am I comfortable running a, you know, projected deficit in the high six figures, hoping that it'll come out better than that? That's probably where my comfort level is, you know, if it were two and a half million dollars the wrong way, I would, you know, be uncomfortable with that, to your fiscal comment. That's where the 400 came from, I mean, I think we would love to put as much resources as possible in the bucket. But just giving Dave some direction that, you know, we're not going to solve every problem in the district at this point in time. I mean, to John's point earlier, there are some really interesting ideas that just came out of tonight's conversation, but I know there's many more on the list. So you, Dave will be going through that process, but, you know, the question would be, is it 10 people or is it four or five people? I mean, I think given the fiscal reality, it's probably translate to four to five FTE, not necessarily headcount. I guess that's what we're just, I'm just trying to get, the end of this, I'll ask Dave if he got what he needed out of this. But that, that's, I'm just looking for direction on the board as we look to update, update budget projections for, for what we're going to, you know, allocate.
Just comfortable up for the board, you don't have to take a vote tonight or voice the $400,000 as a definite, you know. But it does give us a range, and I don't, I, if 400,000 is the range tonight, that's fine. It may change, I understand that, you may come back and say, we can't do 400,000. We need time just to start rolling out and analyzing what 400,000 might do as a target. It's not going to be that we're going to shoot to 400,000 exactly, we're going to have options of what else you can do. But it gives us somewhat of a, of a target that we can start shooting toward, and I'm comfortable with that. So without, you know, the board wringing their hands and saying, well, I'm, I'm on record 400,000, you know, to me, you're not committing anything tonight. And financially, things can change, and we all understand that. But for planning for my administrative team and moving forward, the 400,000 can be used as a target to say, in and around that number, what can we do? You may come back and say, you know what, the, the 400,000 that the administration is projecting and what they're going to do isn't going to meet our needs, and we need to look at this in another way, we understand that, so.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put anybody on the spot, I was really trying to get to that, which was, are we kind of comfortable in this range to let, as a planning tool for Dave?
And it's to spend on this list that you introduced us to last week.
Yeah, I think basically, John, I don't want to say that's the only thing, because we're still gathering input from our stakeholders to say what else might be on the list. Then we're going to have to go back, prioritize those, you know, first of all, define those. Define what the cost is, what we're trying to accomplish. I think going to the three-year process is something we should prudently do, because I think, no matter what, you're going to want some kind of assessment at the end of a period about how effective was it that we invested X number of dollars into this project, or this plan, or this personnel? So, you know, a three-year, what is that going to look like, what are the goals we're trying to attain? And then I've got to have time to go back to the stakeholders and say, okay, now we got the tough decision, how are we going to prioritize this? And that's going to be the really difficult part, because, you know, we can't do it all, what can we do to meet the needs of, of a lot of areas in the district? Move it forward, knowing that we're still going to have some needs that by priority are just not going to make the list. And, but again, making sure that all of the voices in the district are heard, they have input into the process. We consider those and ultimately make our best recommendation to the board.
I guess going back to the list, you described it as middle-range stuff, not long-range, not transformational like some of the things that we kind of were hearing tonight. Whether that's transformational or not, we don't know. But that being said, it seems like if you take that pot of money and you divide it up too much, you don't get the effect that you're looking for. And so I just urge that it tie into a few things that can be accomplished effectively, or that we expect can be accomplished effectively, so. With that, I guess I'm okay, it seems a little different to size the pot and then figure out what you're going to do with it, as opposed to the other way around.
You don't want to have it work through, and then it doesn't come to fruition.
It's like, oh, we would never spend that much money. So, I mean, it, it's just kind of putting, putting at least a ballpark around it, so that there are some big dreams that may just be kind of, okay, those are longer-term things because of them. So that was the intention of this, I didn't, and I apologize if I tried to put anybody in the spot here, we're just trying to get a little bit of guidance. And, and the last item was just an update on Stormwater. You know, Shannon and I had met with Jim Kennedy and Danny Plomsky on, on the next steps on Stormwater. They had been working with the Park District to, to kind of prioritize a project to start with. We had, you know, a month and a half or two months before that, kind of looked at Madison as kind of being the, the easiest and the nearest project to, to collaborate on. And we kind of, we walked through that a little bit, and then talked about our, our facility study that we're doing, our demographic study that's going to lead to, you know, of, you know, capacity, kind of a capacity study, capacity utilization, kind of longer-range, kind of facilities, planning efforts. And how that kind of needs to run parallel, because particularly at Madison, you know, I just looked at the numbers the other day. From 12 to 13, we were up 20% in enrollment, from 13 to 14, we're up almost 40% in enrollment, and almost full. And what would happen if, and we kind of explained this to them, we said, you know, what would happen if we had to double the size of that building? And so what they had asked us to do, and we talked to Chris about doing, was, was just asking why, you know, a really high-level question that just basically said, similar to what we did with Lincoln, what would it look like if we rebuilt at Lincoln? Which would be, if you had to double the size of that facility, where, where would you put it, and what kind of green space would that leave? And how would that fit within the plans with the city? So we, we committed to the city that we would ask the question and take a look at that, and then get together and meet again as, as they start down that road. So that's the update, I, I think we, you know, we want to be good partners, but we have to make sure that we don't do anything foolish. You know, we have to have a long-range view of this and what our facilities are and where we're going. our enrollment is. So that was, that was it.
I don't think this was your question, but this is what I was thinking of when you said that. So if they did use the part of Madison that they want to use for water retention, I mean, shouldn't you also ask White what, how expensive it would be, how big of a deal it would be to then convert that land into usable land on which we could build? I mean, it sounds like what you were going to ask is just, could we fit a building next to it? But shouldn't you also ask, I mean, because I'm not a builder, I don't know, is it a big deal if you've got land that's three to five feet down, and then all of a sudden you want to fill it in to build a building on top of it? Is that a big deal?
I think our goal was to talk about where the footprint would be that they wouldn't touch. So you'd have the existing building, you'd have where you would put potentially in addition to that, and would that leave any green space that you could potentially then use to retain water? Without having to fill it in and build over it again, because-
But what if that's not a big deal?
It's a timing question. I don't know, you know, the answer. The question is, what would it look like? But from the city's perspective, the question is, is if we're going to need this in the next two or three years, which our demographic study is going to help get us some insight into, why would you spend the money to put in the infrastructure only to rip it out quickly? So can we configure the building in such a way where we can solve our needs and the community's needs at the same time, as it relates to stormwater? And the community's needs as it relates to early childhood education and special needs? So we're trying to balance that in communicating the things that we have to be on the lookout for. And so we're working together, and we're going to continue the conversation. I think we're going to run Parallel Pass. I mean, we're going to look at kind of what the footprint could be, and then they're going to do some more work on how it would be executed and some of the concerns that we have around safety and usability and maintenance and liability and all of the things that we had kind of talked about. So we're kind of proceeding down that, down that road with them. So it's just an update, it's another, it's another step along the way. But we have to get our demographic study done, because we have to, we have to make sure that we don't do anything foolish, like give up, you know, give up the use of a piece of land and then turn around and need it right, right back, so.
Chris and Shannon, was there any talk about who's going to be talking to the residents around Madison?
It's not even to that stage, it's so preliminary. It's just a lot of data gathering, and we didn't get to that point.
Okay.
Let's move on to performance management.
All right. Basically, a couple items. We talked about the district performance indicators, from, not from the standpoint of, it's not just about metrics, but it's about driving value, you know, increased student outcomes and our culture and employee satisfaction. So there's a lot of work that's going on within the district, you know, administrative level, at the building level, all the way down to each individual employee. So we talked about how it is all linked, because I know that we got a lot of those questions during the feedback session, and it's important for people to understand how this all works together. So we talked about the linkage of DPIs with the goal setting. Two different satisfaction surveys, the Harris Poll Survey and the Five Essentials, which is the state mandate. There's several different, you know, improvement plans, right? The Rising Stars and the School Improvement Plans, which Charles Johns presented several board meetings ago, where right now, if you're, if it, if you're on, if school is on AYP, you've got the School Improvement or the Rising Stars. But it, more than likely, it's the state's going to be utilizing these, this, basically a methodology, if you will, of continuous improvement for all your schools. And, and so that was important, okay? Then we talked about, Dave shared, the linkage to achievement, meaning the ACT college readiness, the E-Pass growth, the MAP, and all of that, how it relates to the school improvement plans, the goal setting at building level, department level, and the management of the process. So then that really led to, as we, the committee talked about, as we review the DPIs moving forward, can we talk about the progress towards the school improvement plans in conjunction with those DPIs? So it's not just about the metrics, but it's about how we're working towards intentionally improving the programs, if you will, that will result in improved metrics that we will see in the DPIs. I think that was it. And, and not only that, I mean, it's, Dave's working without, throughout the district and also working with the district leadership team and the Labor Management Council. So it's important that, I know that there's a lot of different committees and councils that are going on, and they're all, you know, it's all similar efforts, if you will, it's linked. And I think that's important for us to understand as well. We also talked about, once again, the desire to benchmark our DPIs with comparable districts. So that's a common theme. And then we moved into our topic of attract, retain, and develop our employees. And what we talked about is two different things. I know that for probably the last three years since Dave's been on board, he and Brad have been working on making sure that we have all the job descriptions complete. So we, we got a status on that and then talked about, we discussed a compensation study for non-union affiliated employees. And it's just, we discussed the potential to entertain a bid and discussed the value of obtaining a third-party view of compensation with no commitment to move forward. So it's, you know, what companies are out there? What do they do? You know, how can we, how can we look at, you know, all of our compensation frameworks, if you will? Dave presented a PIRA update specifically around the student growth component that's coming, you know, to school districts shortly. And there's, there's a lot of effort that goes into identifying, identifying student growth component. And there'll be a lot of discussion that Dave will be facilitating with the entire district, so that it's a two-way, that the teachers have input as well. So he's starting to share it with us, so that he's also sharing it with staff and the community, just to start the process of communicating instead of, you know, so people are aware of it. Lastly, at the last board meeting, the Curriculum Instruction Committee asked the, all of the, all of the board members via the various committees to look at the project prioritization rubric, which we really liked, and we provided feedback to the Curriculum Instruction Committee. And then the major item that we had set is, can we kind of test the rubrics with, you know, projects to see, you know, is the weighting appropriate, you know? How will it really help us to prioritize the many different projects that we have to work on? That's what I had. Question?
And, correct me if I, the comp study, Dave, do you want direction on, I mean, is the will of the board that we should explore bids for a comp study, or?
I think at this point, we're going to, we have developed an RFP, and we would like to put out the RFP with no commitment.
Right.
But if, eventually, we'd like to come back to board, see what that bid process renders, and then have a discussion with the board on whether or not we want to go forward with that at that point, given what the cost would be for the study, which we don't know right now.
Yeah, no, I support, you know, doing an RFP to see, see what, what the cost would be. I don't know if you need input from the rest of us on that, or?
Does anybody have reservations about?
Okay. Thank you. Next is the superintendent's consent agenda. There's a little bit of agenda innovation here, in that we've separated the business part of the consenting agenda from items being donated to the district. What this allows us to do is make one motion for the consent agenda, unless somebody wants to pull things off of it and discuss them separately. And then, you know, we can thank our donors and don't have to mess around with the consent agenda to do so. I realize maybe I should have asked for consent and a vote on that, but I exerted a little executive authority there. So on the consented, superintendent's consent agenda, we have items A through K. Anyone like to remove any of those items or make a motion to move forward on those items?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent, consent agenda, items A through K.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by John, that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through K. And we are spending some money here, Mrs. Walsh.
Mrs. Stupin? Yes. Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. So I guess that's five yeses, two ayes, which I am presuming are the same thing. No, no, as that motion passes. Clearly, you can tell when it gets too late. Next, on our superintendent's agenda, there's some other action items. Approval of a new policy, seven colon 185, teen dating violence prohibited. Approval of a foundation donation for a Mediascape furniture and additional funding to provide two labs for the York Learning Commons. There is a very long story behind this that I will spare everyone, but this involves a donation through, potentially, the, through, a lot of this money comes from the state of Illinois, some maybe from Comcast, and some from the Elmhurst District 205 Foundation, as I read through a very long and circuitous route of how this got to our district. But at any rate, to comply with the covenants within this grant to our district, turns out that two new Mediascape facilities for the York Commons, or I should say, the York Learning Commons qualifies those covenants within this grant, and that's what this donation is for. So I'd like to say thank you to everyone who was a part of getting this grant to, to our district and to the foundation in their part, and their money as well. The second is approval of a District 205 Foundation donation of gifts designated for the Madison Early Childhood Center. The District 205 Foundation worked with PNC Bank, which donated $1,000 to the District 205 Foundation. And it is designated for the purchase of multicultural materials for the school library. And a second gift of $1,000 from the Elmhurst Garden Club to support, sorry, the, in addition to their sensory garden at Madison School. So thank you to PNC, to the Elmhurst Garden Club, and to the District 205 Foundation. So those are the three items on the agenda, and I'm looking for a motion. John, can we, do we have to take them one at a time, or can we do all three? You tell us.
I believe it, because it's not a consent agenda, we have to do them one at a time.
Then let's take them one at a time.
Well, then I'll lead off.
Thank you.
And I'll make the motion that the Board of Education accept, as a first reading, new policy number seven colon 185, teen dating violence prohibited, which will become effective at the time of its adoption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, section seven, students.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Moved by John, seconded by Karen, the approval of new policy seven colon 185. All in favor? Opposed? That motion passes. Item B.
I move that the Board of Education accept the gift of Mediascape furniture totaling $27,774.22 to be placed in the Learning Commons of York High School, and approve a gift of funding in the amount of $1,483.29 for the purchase of monitors, speakers, and related accessories to complete two Mediascape learning labs. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy eight colon eighty, gifts to the district.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Karen, seconded by John. This involves money, so, Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven yes, no no's, that motion carries. And finally, item C, approval of foundation donation gifts designated for the Madison Early Childhood Center.
I move that the Board of Education accept the foundation's $1,000 gift to be used in support of the Madison Early Childhood Center's sensory garden and outdoor classroom, and the additional $1,000 gift to purchase multicultural materials for the school library. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy eight colon eighty, gifts to the district.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by John. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Stupin?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. Seven yes, no no's, that motion carries. Next on our agenda is upcoming meetings. Monday, March 3rd, Board Improvement Committee at 7:00 PM, and I will make a note that all of these meetings will occur in the rooms that we're in currently. Wednesday, March 5th, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, March 11th, is our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Tuesday, March 18th, the Finance and Operations Committee at 6:30 PM. Tuesday, March 25th, again, our regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Next on our agenda is action out of closed session on the issue of student residency. I have a motion, please.
I move that the Board of Education approve to uphold the hearing officer's factual findings that Student B is not a resident of the school district, because said student does not and has not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2013-2014 school year. As a result, I further move that Student B be disenrolled on February 28th, 2014, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2013-2014 school year through the date of disenrollment in the amount of $7,997.04.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. Moved by Emily, seconded by Shannon. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? I don't need a roll call, right? Just, no. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next is board communications. Karen?
I have one update from our last board meeting with regard to our park conversation and going to our executive director, Peg Agnos of Lend, which is the Legislative Education Network of DuPage County. And thank you, Dave, I know that you sent the board an article on update from this meeting as well. But Peg indicated that Jay Gay, and she, along with administrators from Cook and the Coller Counties, met with Dr. Chris Cook and the ISBE senior staff to express concerns about the park and the ACT specifically. She said the meeting went well and that she will be joined by other advocates to pursue legislation. She highlighted that legislators are getting the message, and bills and resolutions to delay Common Core and Park are numerous. So that's the update that I have so far.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none. We've reached the end of our agenda, and I declare this meeting adjourned.